You guys hear me? Everybody? Yeah, good, okay. So it is six o'clock. So we are calling to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission Wednesday, December 4th at 6:00 PM. Can we do a roll call? Sherry?
Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Bennett, here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Chesley.
Here.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I would like to do a quick introduction if that's okay before we do the Chair Vice Chair stuff.
Sure.
I'd like to welcome John. So Jonathan, thank you so much for joining us. So I had the pleasure to interview Jonathan and I feel like he's a, he's well qualified. He's got experience in architecture, both in New York and I think in California too, correct? Yeah. So anyway, a wealth of experience and we're very thrilled to have him on board. And Jonathan, if you don't mind speaking a little bit about yourself and introducing yourself? Thanks.
My name is Jonathan Chesley. I am an architect. I am somewhat new to Ojai, but feel it's my home and I'm very excited to be a part of the community as well as have an opportunity to give back. I think I have a lot to offer from my experiences, mostly on the other side of this desk. So I think that'll be wonderful. So, thank you so much.
Awesome. And you do live in the city?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, and I've had been told that before we can do pledge allegiance, we have to first nominate our Chair and Vice Chair.
Yes, so before we, because the Chair identifies who's going to be giving the pledge. We've got the item of business which is selecting the Chair and Vice Chair. And as you can see, we have the Vice Chair that's going to be going through this process. Essentially, what you're going to be doing is just following these four points. You're nominating the election of the Vice Chair will be conducted by Vice Chair Trent. And then basically you'll be asking for nominations. No second for this is required. So if there's individuals on the commission that would like to nominate someone for Chair first, and then taking a vote on that, and then once that's done, then we can go through the Vice Chair in the same manner. Does not require a second.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to nominate.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to nominate John Trent as our new Chair.
Alright.
Okay, and any seconds?
No seconds needed.
Not necessary.
We don't need a second, I guess.
Yep, not necessary.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
There we go.
Yeah, happy to nominate Judy Murphy as Vice Chair.
Oh, okay.
I would say let's do these one at a time.
Chair first and Vice Chair.
Chair first and Vice Chair.
Okay, any, any seconds on Chair? Any, any other nominations? Nope? Okay, alright, so.
Sherry, roll call.
Let's call roll on that.
Call roll.
Trent? Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Chesley?
Yes.
Cool.
Alright.
Fun. So we had a nomination for Vice Chair?
Let's go with, yeah, nomination for Vice Chair.
Think we might have had one?
Nominate Judy Murphy as Vice Chair.
I will, I will second that.
Can we second?
You, you can't.
Not required.
Not required yet. It's not required, but we can.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, awesome. Any other nominations? Okay, Sherry?
This is Ida, by the way.
Oh, I'm sorry, who is that?
This is Ida, so she's.
Ida!
Okay, I'm sorry, Ida.
Ida, you have to turn your volume up or get closer to the microphone.
Yeah, Ida, if you can speak up, Ida, that would be great. So Ida is, I remember I had talked about a new employee that had come on board?
Yes, yes.
Now you're hearing her from.
We're hearing her from above.
Through the speakers.
From the clouds.
So roll call Ida if you get a chance.
Yes, Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Chesley?
Yes.
Now we can.
Alright. So congratulations to the Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you. I will lead us in the pledge. I won't put that on anybody else yet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Alright, good stuff. Moving on. Okay, so this is the point of our meeting where we do the approval of the agenda. Lucas, any changes or?
Nope, no changes.
Okay, alright. We don't need to do any sort of roll call or vote on that, correct?
Correct.
Alright. So now we move on to public comments. Again, this is public comments. It's a time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address any items of city business other than the scheduled agenda items. Items that are raised at this time are briefly discussed and by, and by the commission, it will generally be referred to staff and placed on subsequent agenda items. No further action can be taken. Alright, so we do have a couple folks here that are speaking for public comments. First, I'd like to call up Steve Quilisi if he's available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's often said it's not the work that makes the job, it's the people. And in my eight years on the Planning Commission, I was never more proud of a group of folks doing the city's business than of the ones that I served the last two years. I salute all of you.
Thank you.
Now, Lucas and Maura and others know the business here. Your council knows the law. They'll keep you straight. And with you five, the city will be in good hands. I salute you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
I do want to thank Steve again for his, his exceptional service and what he's done, you know, so far for our city. I know that he's going to continue in those efforts in another capacity, but we will certainly miss him here at the Planning Commission.
He leaves big shoes to fill.
Big shoes. I don't know if we will ever fill his shoes, but we will try. Okay, cool. Another public comment I have is Larry Steingold. Uh oh, careful.
Larry Steingold, citizen resident. Welcome to the Board, the Planning Board. Steve Quilisi did a great job. I hope you follow up on all his requirements and suggestions regarding the encampment and the questions regarding that land and the property. You all came here because, we all came here because of what Ojai is. Not for what Ojai was. I wish I could go back, but I can't. So try to do your best to maintain what we have. Try not to kill the golden goose. So.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And thank you, and thank you.
Awesome. Okay, one more. Ruth Miller, if she's available.
Good evening. I'm Ruth Miller with the In-House Task Force. On November 6th, 2024, a member of the public reported during public comment of the Ojai Planning Commission that he obtained copies of a police report for the Ojai City's tent encampment, now known as Ojai Tent Town. He stated there were 157 police calls for Tent Town in the current year. He reported the same statistics in the Ojai Valley News on November 22nd. On November 26th, another member of the public stood in front of the city council and shared the same figure of 157 calls for Tent Town in 2024. I decided to do a deeper dive into the 157 police calls and went to Ventura County Sheriff's Department to obtain the report with the dates from the first of the year through the 26th in November. I immediately noticed that nine out of 12 pages were pre-July 2024, which is when Amy Weiss with St. Francis Challenge Resident Steward Model was hired, as well as the hiring of a security farm. The data speaks to the positive impact of the additional onsite services at Tent Town with a significant decrease in calls. I also noticed that over half of the activity codes were labeled busy and public service. That's over half. I didn't know what those meant, so I called the Ojai Station and spoke with Chief Torena Newman. She explained the codes represent a visit initiated by an officer and usually means a walk-through. These are not calls made by the public for services. Chief Newman mentioned that most of the calls involved just a few residents and in particular, one resident who had calls about him most days and sometimes even twice a day. This resident, along with a few others, had been exited from Tent Town after breaking the good neighbor agreements. She said that since being exited, these previous residents are rarely seen by the police. The police know, the neighbors know, and the current police statistics show that the combination of St. Francis Challenge, the resident stewards, and onsite security have made a major change for the better at Ojai Tent Town. That's why it's important to truly understand the data. The statistics originally painted a bleak picture actually ended up showing the positive impact made by the city's prudent investment in services. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question.
Oh, Ruth.
Ruth, I have, I have a question. Where do you live?
Where do I live?
Yeah.
I live on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any other public comments? No? Okay. Alright, we'll close this.
Hello?
Oh, we got one online? I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not entirely sure why I got this. I got an, on my Zoom thing, it said the host would like me to speak, but I don't know what about.
Diane, are you, are you, are you calling in about public comment? I guess, okay, maybe not. Alright, so we'll move on. We'll close this portion of the meeting and move on to consent, consent items. Meetings of the.
Past Chair, if you could, you should at least offer up anybody that's online.
Okay.
Because that might have been the opportunity. I, I don't have the.
Oh, okay. Do we have anybody else online?
There we go.
Anybody else online for public comment?
No, we don't.
Nope, okay, perfect. Thank you. Alright, now we'll move on to consent items and meetings of the prior commission. Is there any revisions anybody would like to make? Anybody get a chance to review? Does it look okay? Okay, can we, Ida, can we get a roll call?
Wait, on what?
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Chesley?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to disclosure of site visits and expert take contacts. Did we, and then we'll open it up to, to staff? Okay. I did have a chance to visit the site. I did meet with Chris and he had the opportunity to share with us his concept and what they're, what the Inn is considering for this, for the site.
I also toured the site with Chris and I've received one phone call from an interested citizen.
I also visited the site with Chris and walked through the plans and the design.
I walked through the site with Chris and, and spent a fair amount of time with the plans and have not talked to any neighbors or anyone else about it.
I was unable to visit the site. No expert take contacts.
Perfect. Okay, cool. Maura, do you want to walk us through?
Yes, thank you. My name is Maura Macaluso and I'm your principal planner here at the city of Ojai. What I'd like to do is give you a, an overall presentation and then have a PowerPoint while inviting the applicant up to go through the PowerPoint and then you'll have an opportunity to ask staff or the applicant questions or to clarify. So the project site is located at 821 West Ojai Avenue and the Planning Commission is charged with reviewing consideration of a design review permit for exterior renovation and in addition to the existing winery site, an amendment to an existing conditional use permit for revisions to outdoor seating and the addition of a section of chain link fence on the west property line and a tree permit for the removal of eight protected oak trees. The winery has included indoor and outdoor seating for wine tasting and event holdings since 2014. The facility will do the same while being absorbed into the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa Campus with shared operational services and parking. The event aspect of the site is not proposed to change or be intensified from what was previously approved. The project specifics include renovating the exterior mission revival architecture to farmhouse architectural style. The addition is approximately 5,000 square feet and includes a professional commercial kitchen and a private meeting room. Other than the meeting room, the indoor seating is being reduced from 72 to 48 spaces. The site renovations include landscaping, outdoor seating, activity areas, increased parking and a shuttle and pedestrian crossing over the existing Ventura County bike path to join the Ojai Valley Inn site to the south. The section of West Ojai Avenue, including the winery, is large with undeveloped, with undeveloped large, excuse me, yard areas for the adjacent sites and there are, are a selection of eclectic structures with varying setbacks. The parcels adjacent to the west include street adjacent parking and the proposed farmhouse architectural style staff feels is appropriate as not only is the surrounding architecture eclectic, but the farmhouse style architecture is included in the main camp, on the main campus of the Ojai Valley Inn. A traffic study was prepared by associated transportation engineers include, and includes that it's anticipated that approximately 50% of the patrons of the winery will be local, from the local community and 50% will be overnight guests from the resort. The access proposed over the bike path is for a seamless transition for resort guests. The winery will have 61 onsite parking spaces for guests coming to the winery and there will be additional parking for the campus as a whole that is meeting the north and the south side of the bike path total. And will be avail, and that additional parking that is going to be for both sides of the bike path will be located on the south side of the bike path. Additional outdoor seating experiences are proposed at the winery that include farm-style dining as well as a more intimate seating around fire pits, trellis areas and under porch roof seating. And these additional outdoor seating areas are on the south and east sides of the winery structure. As already stated, the event aspect of the project is not proposed to be intensified from what was previously approved. And the previous approval includes special event hours Sunday through Saturday from noon till 11:00 PM. And no special events on weekends are to begin or end during commuter hours. Those hours would be 6:30 AM to 9:00 AM and 3:30 PM to 6:30 PM. The path crossing across the Ventura County bike path is subject to specific conditions of approval, including a maintenance agreement between the city of Ojai and Ventura County. You'll find this condition in your, in your resolution. The path crossing includes safety measures, including stop signs for both the general public and those crossing the path. The stop signs are for the people crossing north and south, but they are for the safety of people traveling east and west as well. There are a total of 46 qualifying protected oak trees on the project site. The requested tree permit is due to the proposed removal of eight of those protected trees. Five of the eight to be removed have chain link fencing embedded in their trunks and would not be surviving very long anyway. The tree protection plan is included and it requires supervision of a qualified arborist for removal, pruning, canaping, or any work around trees. Not just for the protected oak trees and sycamores, but all trees. Protection of birds in trees other than the oaks was brought to staff's attention prior to the meeting today and the, the tree protection plan is included as part of the conditions of approval. However, the commission may wish to make an additional condition of approval specifically regarding the protection of birds in non-protected trees. The Ojai Mountain Winery was purchased by the Inn in 2022 with the intention of protecting and elevating the winery as an out, as an asset to the community and resort guests. The site has a natural feel with existing and proposed landscaping. The overall facility is proposed to be absorbed into the Inn's campus with shared operational and parking as indicated previously. And also as indicated, the physical connection is that shuttle and pedestrian pathway across the Ventura County-owned bike path. The applicant includes that to complement the architecture and theme of the project and work with the conditions of local climate, the planned palette features low water use, California native and Mediterranean plants. The winery grounds feature the reuse of the existing olive trees and the addition of new fruiting olive trees. The existing vineyard is proposed to be expanded and redesigned with soil building techniques and spacing that minimizes water use. California natives are located throughout the site and complement the coast live oak alley on Ojai Avenue, on West Ojai Avenue by providing shade, screening, biofiltration and plant sources for pollinators. With that, I, or I'm finished with that and I'm going to now... I'm going to find out what Lucas wants. Okay, what I was going to do now is present the PowerPoint presentation and invite Chris Candazoria and the architect Sylvia Noboli, I think is, is the last name. And perhaps there's, and someone else here or online as well?
Should be Scott from ATE should be online.
Okay, so our traffic engineer and also our landscape, landscape architect.
Kathy Nolan should be here if you'd run away.
Okay, so I think we can start and by the time we get to those topics, we'll either be able to answer them jointly or, or those two professionals will be here.
Alright. Come on up.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you all again.
Good to see you.
Thanks for the time.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to.
Chris, if you could, I'm sorry, Chris, if you could introduce yourself and Sylvia as well, even though I already introduced you. Thank you.
My name is Chris Kanzor, Senior Vice President at the Ojai Valley Inn. Been with the resort for 13 years. And I oversee a lot of the facilities, development, construction, as well as sales and marketing, spa, retail, a variety of different areas of the resort. And this is Sylvia Nobili.
Sylvia Nobili. We're Nobili Marquez Arquitectura and we are the architects involved with the renovation of the winery.
I just wanted to highlight something that Maura said real quick earlier. We originally, I don't know if you knew this or not, but we sold this piece of land to Larry Gara, who ended up building the Topam Mountain Winery. I want to say we sold it to him in maybe 2015, 2016, somewhere in there, maybe earlier. And he approached us in late 2021 and he said, hey, I'm, I'm moving out of the area. Thinking about selling the winery. Would the owners of the Inn be interested? And I went ahead and did my duty and asked the owners and there just wasn't a strategic interest in, in, you know, regaining the property. And so we said, no, thank you, you know, best of luck. He subsequently came back to us a couple months later and said, hey, I'm, you know, I'm going to go on the open market with this property. Are you sure you don't want to, you know, take another consideration of purchasing it? It was then when we went back to ownership and talked about all of the, you know, pros and cons of potentially, you know, reacquiring the asset. And ultimately, we did decide to move ahead with purchasing it for three primary reasons. Number one is we knew someone was going to buy the property. We didn't know where they were going to come from, outside of town, you know, LA, San Francisco, New York. Someone was going to buy this. We have had in the past some challenges with noise from the winery that affect the resort itself, as well as some neighbors that are here today. And so one of our motives was to purchase this for defensive reasons. It borders the resort. We can control noise issues. We, we are the neighbor. We're not worried about a new neighbor and, and what they're going to actually do to the property and how it would change. So that was number one. Number two was we really wanted to expand our epicurean experiences for guests. So if some of you are familiar with the farmhouse, the concept of the farmhouse was to create this exhibition kitchen where culinaryians could come in, chefs from all around the world and share their craft with, with locals and guests that are staying at the resort. And we've been incredibly successful with that at the farmhouse. So the idea of acquiring this was to do the same as we did with the farmhouse in the culinary world with winemakers and different vineyards, both Central Coast, Napa, European Cousins, et cetera, and be able to have really unique wine experiences brought here to Ojai. So this way we have both the culinary side, we've got the wine side, and it just elevates the guest experience and further differentiates who the Ojai Valley Inn is compared to our competitors. So that was another huge motor, motivator. And third is, is truly to maintain this facility as a locals' favorite. This has been, as many people know in this community, widely visited by locals. Our intention is to continue that. That will not change. I'm sure there's some concern that perhaps the prices are going to be, you know, outrageous or resort level prices. That's not the intent to do this with the winery. We do want it to be approachable. We want everybody to be able to experience it. Adding a kitchen, I think, is really important for the, the local experience or any experience there. So bringing in the ability to have food there is, is, was something that was absolutely critical for us. And we just want to make sure that it's a, continues to be a favorite gathering spot for all of the community. So that, or those were the three driving purposes that we, we decided ultimately to go ahead and purchase the, the, the winery back. With that, I guess we could start the PowerPoint? Any questions on that aspect or is this?
I, do we want to hold questions until after the PowerPoint? Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll hold. Yeah, yeah, thank you though.
Great.
Sherry, I think you took my screen away.
Ida.
Sherry, I'm sharing the screen. I think you may have changed it. Can you please put it back?
We didn't change anything.
Technical difficulties? Do we want to take a break while we're waiting for, oh, there we go.
Cool.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. So yeah, just this intro slide is just to talk a little bit about, you know, the overview of what the winery experience is to be. The winery is unquestionably Ojai tasting room experience with a focus on wines of the Central Coast. So what do we mean by that? The, the style, the interiors are very much Ojai reminiscence. You know, there's really comfortable seating, leather, Bohemian textiles. It's going to be a really comfortable, you know, welcoming kind of vibe overall. We definitely want to focus on wines of the Central Coast. We want to elevate that for guests that are coming. You know, people, people sometimes think that Southern, you know, is Ojai in Southern Calif, or in Southern California? Is it like more Southern California? Is it more Central Coast? So we want to kind of highlight more of the Central Coast. Of course, Napa wines and beyond as well. The rustic old world meets California menu is built around gathering and conversation, which is designed entirely to share. A lot of the menu will be driven around sharing. So made to order charcuterie boards for, for people. We will have, you know, some rotisserie selections, pastas, just a lot of sharing type of flatbreads and pizzas, stone-fired pizzas, et cetera. Architecture, the stunning architecture and surrounding landscape really emphasizes the natural feel. There are a lot of olive trees that are on property now. We're going to, we plan to bring some more in. We want to expand the vineyards as well and certainly integrate climate-appropriate plants, including Mediterranean and California natives, which Kathy Nolan has helped us do. And lastly, again, is just to make sure to reemphasize this, this is designed for the community. The winery promises to be a favorite gathering place for any occasion. The following slides, we will walk through different vantage points and renderings of the facility itself. The first one, if we can advance.
Oh, here we go. There it is.
Okay. The first one is just the overall site plan. If you don't mind going actually back one slide, I can show you the, the broader view. I know you've all seen this in your packets. Maybe some of you folks here in the room, this is the first time that you are seeing it. I'll kind of focus on this television over here. So on the south side here of the television anyway, you can see where the pathway connects and crosses over the Ventura Bike Trail and into the winery area. It's important for us to make that connection so we can have our guests bike, walk, and then extend our shuttle service into the winery area. Currently, we do have shuttle service that goes down this road. It goes down to Camp Oak every single day on a regular circulation. And then the winery just adds into the exact loop of that shuttle that goes throughout the property. loop of that shuttle that goes throughout the property. Mara talked a little bit about parking. We are removing some parking along the T-box area there to allow for this shuttle service to go through, and we are adding the displaced parking over to the right, and we're also doing additional stacked parking over what we call the chumash lot right there to help us, even though this is above and beyond what's required for our own valet purposes.
Chris, is that new parking on the right?
It is not. It's there now, we're just actually adding some stacked parking.
The stacked parking is the only new?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And that needs to be managed professionally, obviously, because, you know, that just wouldn't work if we just let people figure it out. So, that's primarily going to be, for the stacked parking, be for valet purposes. So, the reason for that is, again, because we are displacing parking places. Moving up into the site itself, the actual, there's a turnabout for guests to be dropped off. There's also a number of bike stands over there for people who are biking in from the actual trail, or if they're coming down off of Ojai Avenue. We did need to add additional parking, which I'm sure we'll talk more about. One of the primary reasons that we needed to add more parking was due to the kitchen itself. Because you have to add in the square footage of the kitchen, that alone required us to add twenty more parking spots just to have a kitchen. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, I know that, I just want to make sure everybody is aware that we only added that the twenty more spots because we had to do a kitchen, and frankly, we've always felt that, you know, this winery, in order for it to be, or this venue in general, to reach its maximum, it needs to serve food. You know, Larry, the previous owner, he plumbed, he put all the utilities, he always intended to put a kitchen into this facility, he just ended up not doing it and trying to sell it. So, that was always in the plans for the winery. So, no matter what, it triggered additional parking spots. So, we did put the parking up against Ojai Avenue. We can talk about screening, because I know that that's a sensitive topic, and we're certainly willing to work with all of you on how to solve that. You can see that there is berming that is around the lawn there. The idea for that was a couple things. Number one, noise mitigation. Number two, when you're standing in the back of the winery and you look out towards the Topa Mountains, currently, right now, you see straight across and you see traffic on Ojai Avenue, you see the stoplights, you see all of that. The berming is going to give you this new vantage, this new look, where all you're going to really see is the mountains and landscaping around. So, you're kind of enveloped by truly the Ojai feel. So, that was the reason that we wanted to add that. If you go to the next slide, please. This gives you kind of a zoomed-in look here at exactly that turnabout. On the front of the entrance for resort guests, or really anyone, even parking, both sides that can come in, goes through as a bocce ball court, and there's a whole bunch of activity happening in the front yard that we're going to look at with the renderings. The majority of the expansion of the winery itself is the kitchen and bathrooms. The backyard has very little change, and then another significant change here is that we're relocating the trash receptacles off of the main road, which is frankly a bit unsightly, and we're moving it back into that left-hand corner.
Chris, can you point to where the berm is?
Yes, it's these... See how it's kind of like, looks like almost like a map? Jonathan can show you.
Right there?
This and this are berms?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay. I see, so that one berm toward the street there, that'll help kind of with the distraction or will hide some of the-
Exactly, that's exactly what the intent was.
How much space is there between that front parking and the street?
You mean like linear foot, like-
Oh, right there. Yeah, right where the pointer is.
From the street all the way to like the bike path?
Part of the parking right there, right by the wall.
You know, I know that it's in the drawing somewhere, but I will tell you that if you can picture it, right now, there is a white fence.
Yeah.
So, you have the road, you have the white fence, and then the side, the actual sidewalk, which is going to be done in DG, happens. And then you have a row of new bushes, which are those small circles. Then you have the fence as well. So, I don't know, do you know off the top of your head how many feet?
No, but it has to be, it's for sure more than ten feet.
Ten feet?
That is the minimum requirement, and we are exceeding that.
From the street, will you be able to see the parked cars?
So, there is, in ordinance, I believe that we have proposed a thirty-six-inch fence plus hedge that would grow above that. You can go, I believe, to forty-two inches, which we're happy to do if we want to go to forty-two inches on the actual fence, and then grow the hedge taller. Obviously, we want to make sure that, you know, we're protecting headlights into the, you know, into the street, into my kid's school across the street, you know, and all of that. So, we want to do whatever is most appropriate to take care of that.
And we want to preserve the oak trees along Ojai.
Oh, yeah, there was another thing, you know, originally, because there is, actually, if you go to the next slide, I think it shows you a rendering of the front.
Oh, sorry, yes.
So, you see the cinder black wall that exists now. At one point, we thought about extending that further down, but the reality is you really can't do it because of the protection of the oak trees. So, by doing these posts and doing the fence, then you can work around the root systems and put something in that's going to solve for the masking. So, this gives you a bird's eye view from the northwest. You can see the trash receptacle was moved back to the far right. This right-hand side, that's the main addition, which again is that kitchen. The center stays the same, the far-left side of the building extends slightly, really, I think Sylvia will probably talk about that. And you can see that the actual main tasting bar is in the front of the winery, not the back, for a couple of reasons. Number one, you do hear the traffic on Ojai Avenue. It's, you know, especially during, you know, peak hours, it can get a little bit loud. So, we thought, since that's a little bit of the activity zone, let's make, let's put the bar up there, and then the bocce ball court, and instead of having in the back, also not have it in the back because of, again, noise. Noise does travel across the course, right to the resort, right to our neighbors' houses. So, that was another strategic reason for putting the bar in the front, was to, again, not worry about the noise as much in the back. The next slide takes you from the southeast. This shows you the golf cart path kind of coming up, the turnabout where people are dropped off, and then they walk into the winery itself. Gives you a little bit of an idea of all of the new vines that we plan to plant. We want to maintain however many mature vines that are there already, just for aesthetic reasons, and then we'll bring in more.
Chris, do you plan on having a local vineyard keep those vines and incorporate that production?
We do, we do. We're working with a local gentleman now. He's been maintaining them since Larry put them in, and we intend just to give the grapes to him to, you know, to use. I mean, how that evolves over time, I don't know. It's not, at least in our desire or intent right now, to actually make our own single vineyard, you know, bottled wine at this facility. This just gives you a look at the front. I wanted to point out something about this particular rendering, which is, this doesn't show you all of the trees. Most people here have been to this site, and I just want to impress on folks that when you're going down the street, you're not going to see this massive, there are so many mature trees already there. These are just renderings to give you an architectural feel. So, the footprint stays pretty much the same, all the trees in the front stay the same. So, there is plenty of masking as you're going down Ojai Avenue. This is just a view from the trail, if you were looking towards the backyard, if you will, of the winery. The fencing is a chain-link fence that goes around the entire property for security reasons.
And if we could go back to that, I have a question on the bike path.
Sure, absolutely.
So, we're going to create a crossing there, you would create a crossing there. I'm curious to know about the flow of traffic from the inn?
Yes.
And is there going to be a stop sign? Is there going to be some sort of lighting for, you know, pedestrians or people on bikes? What does that look like?
I'm glad you brought that up, and we have a couple more defined slides on that. So, I want to spend some time on that, because it's an important part of the whole project. So, if we, excuse me, maybe, I think it's three slides from now. So, the next one, this just gives you kind of the vantage point from the front. If you were in the front, you can see the actual bar, then you can sit inside and outside with appropriate climate, and there's also a fire feature there. The next slide just shows you the backyard. Not a whole lot changes with the backyard as it is now. All of those mature olive trees stay, et cetera. And then you can see the seating under the eaves. Oh, here on the left, no, that's fine. Here on the left is a, so the kitchen, and then the bathrooms, and then this is a small private dining room, so that can seat twelve people in that small room there. And that could be for private tastings, et cetera.
Before we talk about this, I wanted to, if you don't mind going back a couple slides, on the kitchen, there's a shot of the kitchen where there's a, it almost looks like there's an opening?
Yeah, the roof pit.
Yeah, what is-
That's for a few things. It's for your HVAC systems, as well as, solar will be integrated as well onto the roofing. But, yeah, that's where we're going to hide all of our mechanical.
Got it, okay, all right. So, that's not like an open area that is like a skylight or something?
No, no, all mechanical storage, and you wouldn't see it from the ground.
Got it, okay. And Mara, I apologize, there's a back, a couple more slides, but it's okay. I think we got it.
You don't, do you need to, would you like to go back?
No, it's okay. I think we, I understand at least.
Okay, so, let's talk about the crossing. We have been in conversations with the county about the appropriate and safe crossing of this bike path for probably more than a year at this point. We've had all sorts of folks come down from the county and talk to us about it. On this side here is, what we're saying is the Ojai Valley inside with the white pillars. There is an automatic gate that's on both sides. So, during the day, the gate is wide open, and then the shuttles and pedestrians can walk through. We have a number of different safety, safety issues kind of worked in. First of all, we are changing the actual surface to a textured, paved surface, just to give people the, you know, the feeling that you are, you should be slowing down. We have integrated stop signs. Obviously, we'll do plenty of training. We're backing up the stop signs, I want to say they're thirty feet back and then closer to give people on the bike path plenty of visual notice to slow down. We're still talking to the county. I know we have to still come to an agreement with exactly, between the city and the county, what's incorporated here, but we're happy to put, you know, whatever we need to, rumble strips, we have put lighting, we can do whatever is required to make this as safe as possible for people that are on the bike path. I mean, the goal would be to make this safer than, you know, the street crossing.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Just follow up on that. When we talk about for the pedestrians and cyclists, they're not going to have a stop sign, right? There will be something like a light that turns on. The stop signs are actually for like the golf carts.
The stop signs are for, yes, for both sides of the golf carts, exactly. And so, but there will be a caution signs as you're approaching, if you're biking or if you're walking.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chris, quick question. So, on, we got a, somebody wrote in a comment about this, and one of the concerns was about your parking structure and when it's open and closed. And I don't know the hours of your, of the parking structure that's on-site currently that you guys use for valet parking, but one of the comments was, is that sometimes that gate is closed, and people wait in line to get access, wait for it to open, and it kind of creates traffic issues.
Yes.
They're wondering how this would incorporate with that? Are people going to be waiting for their car, and they're going to be kind of sitting here in the golf carts?
Yes, so I read that as well. That is from a neighbor that's right on Country Club. And so, that person happens to live with, you know, beyond the front gatehouse. So, what happens at the gatehouse is that there is occasionally times where people do stack up because we're stopping people, we're welcoming there, asking them, you know, do you have a reservation, where are you going to the restaurant, whatnot? We can give them directions from there. And then also for staying guests, what we do is we dispatch up to, when we say, hi, Mr. and Mrs. Johnson here checking in for two nights, thank you so much. We have notes that say they're here for their anniversary, we greet them appropriately, we dispatch it up to the bellman, so they can also have a seamless, you know, welcome. So, sometimes that takes a little bit of time, especially on a Friday when there's a big leisure check-in, so it can get stacked up. So, I can understand if I lived on that road, that might be a little bit frustrating that there's a few, you know, cars in the queue. However, we do also have a plan to, that we'll be approaching at some point, to modify the front entrance, the gatehouse, where we would be adding a second lane to the, entering the actual property. The second lane would be for three people, the three bodies of people. Number one, employees, two, residents that live on the street, and three members, golf members of the resort. So, they'll actually be offered a key fob and, or an integrated RFID card that's, you know, on their lens of their headlight, and that it'll just open automatically for them. So, that's something that we are absolutely going to do in the future.
Will that be done by the time-
How that coincide with this?
Well, you know, that's a good question, because at this point, you know, our timeline for this project is, and this won't open until, I would say, fall of '26 at the earliest. So, this is still quite a ways out, so it's very well possible that the front entrance might be modified prior to this actually opening.
Okay, thank you.
Also, one last thing is to address, also in that email, talking about this is, so that's addressing the vehicle gate, right? This is the actual pedestrian gate. Currently, it is locked, and it is only available for guests of the resort. So, they can leave the resort, so can neighbors, by the way, people that live on the road. They can leave, and then the only way you can come back in is if you actually have a room key, or the neighbors have their own private fob to access it. And that's really right now, just for security, you know, reasons. This area will be much more activated, I mean, with our own employees when this happens, so we do not, we intend to have these both gates open during the day, and at night, we will close it.
Are there speed limits on the, for e-bikes on the trail?
That's a good question. I ask my son that when he's on the trail. I don't think he's abiding by any of them. I don't actually know. I know we are, we have five miles an hour throughout the resort, you know, we try, but I don't know about the bike path itself. It's a good question. We could find out.
It'd be nice to follow up with the county on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. So, you have two gates that you're going to close after hours?
That's correct.
Okay. One exiting the winery, the other one entering the inn.
The resort, that's right.
So, you're going to close both of those, and you're going to close them at ten, or you're going to close them at eleven?
At eleven, I believe, is the time that we'd be closing them.
And if there's somebody that's kind of straggling around, are they going to be escorted off, away from the gate, or are they going to get like, I'm sure they won't get locked on the-
I will tell you, the security-
How tall is the gate?
Well, we do have cameras, you know, there. We do, actually, we monitor cameras twenty-four seven, and we have a pretty robust, you know, surveillance system, as well as on property loss prevention, security. So, there have been, you know, some situations with that, people passing through on the bike path at night that, you know, we've alerted police prior, but we'll keep a close eye on it.
Well, I meant for like, you know, if you're having an event, and guests are at the winery, and it passes, you know, eleven o'clock, and they're still there having a good time, and you guys close the gates.
Well, yes, we, well, we would make sure that everybody's, if there was an event, we, yeah, we'll manage that for sure. We don't want, you know, anyone sleeping in the winery, or not knowing where to go, or anything like that. That's also something we'll definitely flush out as we get closer.
Okay.
I mean, because the, you know, events generally end around ten o'clock, because the noise ordinance, you know, says ten o'clock, so pretty much things shut down at ten for our corporate events. The next slide is, this just gives you another, you know, view from the resort side, looking across. Again, kind of shows you the paver system, some of the stop signs. And then the following slide from here gives you a little bit of a site plan kind of view of it as well, and just different, you know, just different vantage points, a drone view from the inside. And that is pretty much, I think you did add a couple more, right?
I did, and I was just going to say, in the, on the left side of the slide are the pavers that are proposed for the crossing. And so, yes, there's actually just this one slide. I think I told you there were two, but there's this one slide with the proposed landscape plan for the winery site, and then the adjoining site on the south side of the bike path is on the right.
Yeah, on the right, so the expansion of the shuttle bike and walking path, what happens there is we are removing, when you- happens there is we are removing, when, when you heard about the tree mitigation plan, that it's really the trees that are in this zone right here that have been, probably grew up from acorns and just grown right into the mesh of the, of the fence. So that's where majority, that's where the trees are going to be removed to allow for the shuttle path. And then we'll put in new olive trees to create like an alley that, you know, kind of like, I guess, is reflective of the entire drive up as well, just to kind of stay consistent with the plant material there. And that'll go all the way up to the bike path. And then on the left-hand side is a little bit better view of exactly what we want to do from a landscaping perspective, especially along Ojai Avenue to help screen from the parking and headlights.
Okay. Thank you.
That is the conclusion of the PowerPoint. I was just looking to see who was here.
Kathy.
There she is.
It is your landscape architect, Kathy Noel. And just in case you have questions, she just sat down. Anyway, so that is the conclusion and it's open up to, to continued questions if you have any of staff or the applicant.
Mara, before we go any further, if I could, could I have the architect speak to the design and kind of how that unfolded and developed? Chris, I know you have a lot of experience, but I'd like to hear from the architect in terms of how that kind of morphed.
Well, okay, let me start out, not to like steal the microphone all night here. But I want to explain to you a little bit about why this architecture has even been introduced to the Ojai Valley. And because as you know, it's a very Spanish colonial style campus. So why, why do we have this farm-style building? And it really goes back more than 10 years ago. The resort itself was, wasn't really, I would say, it wasn't performing at how it is today with occupancy and rate. It was maybe struggling a little bit. And we as a leadership team were really kind of looking at ourselves, saying, you know, who do we compete against? And the majority of our competitors are ocean resorts. You know, you've got the Montages and Bakaras and all of these resorts all the way down the coast. And so what can we do that makes us different from the other competitors, you know? And there was a time when I first started that I put in our website, like, you know, we're 12 miles from the ocean. You should bring your surfboard. And tried to like, I tried to drag the ocean closer to Ojai. And
It's hard to do.
And it didn't work. It just didn't work. I mean, I spent so much time trying to convince people that, yeah, I know it's hot here in the summer, but the ocean's so close and look at the Ventura Pier and, you know, all of these things. And none of that marketing worked. So we went through this kind of like, you know, soul-searching process of, you know, who do we want to be? What can we own that nobody else can own? And, you know, it's this valley. It's our backyard. And, you know, when, when people are talking about farm-to-table being this, this, what's farm-to-table? Farm-to-table, we're like true farm-to-table in this valley. We're valley-to-table. We have one of the longest organic farmers markets in the state running here, right here. Why don't we elevate the experience of living here with the olive oil and with the honey tasting and the citrus trees and, and try to own this more Epicurean experience that no one else really can do. So the creation of the farmhouse itself was really to pay homage to the first industry of Ojai, which was farming. And so we created this facility for that reason. And then we also incorporated all of these culinary events. And we're fortunate enough to have a culinary ambassador named Nancy Silverton out of Los Angeles join our team and start bringing all these chefs to share their craft with the world at the farmhouse. And it's been highly successful for it, so, for us. So, and we've grown over the years because of it. So the reason that architecture exists is again, because of the history of the Ojai Valley and, and how we wanted to differentiate ourselves and become more of that Epicurean experience. So the winery is kind of step two of that kind of experience for our guests.
Chris, what was on the site before Larry Guerra bought it? Was it a car dealership?
I, I just remember when I moved here, they were selling hot tubs out of it. It was like a spa.
It was a spa?
Spa building. It may have been at one time, though. I think some, some sort of a dealership.
Right. It was?
Years ago. Sorry.
Following what Chris was talking about, the style of the winery was really taken from the farmhouse and the idea of extending the Epicurean experience that existed farmhouse with the wine experience. So tried to connect the two structures in that sense. The other thing is talking about the trees and the screening along Ojai Avenue and the dense foliage when you drive on Ojai Avenue, having the structure that is with wood siding that can blend in with the landscape felt appropriate to screen to, some ways blend in the new structure with existing landscaping and now making into a more of a viewing structure when you're driving on the road. When you look right across from the winery and you look at the school, what you see on the other side are actually more than the school, you see the horses. You see where the stall for the horses are. So going back to what the winery originally was, wineries are agrarian agricultural structures, mostly times in the middle of vineyards. So a simple agricultural agrarian structure would have been a barn. So again, connecting the history of the valley and the agriculture agrarian history with what we are doing now and connected to the vineyards that are existing and that we want to expand. And lastly, there are not really significant buildings around the site. There's nothing else that would tie in a specific kind of architecture to this specific site. When you're approaching from Ventura, the first building you see is just the Boku Building that is a total non-descriptive building. Then the structure right before the winery is this little cottage. And across the street again are the horses and the school. So we felt that the connection with the Ojai Valley and the connect, with the farmhouse at the Ojai Valley and, and what we are trying to create there and using the same type of architecture was in keeping with the overall, overall Ojai and the feel of Ojai and the city where it is. We didn't feel the necessary having to maintain the style of the building that is there now would have really changed the feel of the space.
Now, now, would you say that the, the school, the Ojai Valley is ranch-style?
Some of the buildings are, the new buildings are a tweak on that. They're keeping like the wood shop, the woodworking shop as the same of the wood boards and battens materials that we are not proposing boards and battens. We are proposing just wood siding, but same idea. But, and then there are some of the other buildings that are just white painted buildings. So it's a mix of the two.
Okay.
But they're small structure with a low-pitched roof that is what is existing at the winery now and what we are going to maintain. Like, we are now proposing to alter the height of the building. We are now proposing to change the slope of the roofs. And also on the addition with the kitchen, we are going to maintain the same characters of architecture of the existing building. Same pitch of roof and same, starting with the same plate height.
So the height that you guys are planning, I think it's 23 feet, right?
Yeah, it's not higher than what is there now.
What it's currently at?
Yeah.
All right. And currently, it's more of a Spanish revival?
There are some elements and I believe it's mainly the terracotta tiles on the roof. When you look at the building per se, yes, there are a couple of arched windows. But it's a mix, like the heavy timber porches and the terracotta tiles and the arched windows are probably the main elements. And then the building is painted a light color.
Okay.
That usually makes you think more of a Spanish revival.
For sure. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question, it's really for, for the, the resort. If you wanted to go and use a facility at the resort for a party, particularly if it's a wedding, there's a minimum number of rooms you have to take and things like that.
Correct.
One of the things about the facility as it has been, it's been a facility that could be used with a caterer, didn't have a kitchen, but with a caterer could be used for a rehearsal dinner or a wedding. Are you going to have requirements that the food and the minimum room spend will have to take place to use the winery? Or will it be rentable for an event by a, by a local organization or an individual?
Well.
Let me disclose that I have a wedding coming up. Not me, but.
Is that a conflict?
No. Well, I, I'll tell you, the facility will be used more from an event perspective for corporate events. And so that, it's a little more complex to explain. But, you know, it's another venue for a corporate event. So let's just say there's a law firm that has booked 80 rooms for three nights and they will maybe do their opening reception at a pool. Second night's at the farmhouse. They need a third night. It, it, it might be at the winery. So there won't be per se, for like weddings, right now, our weddings are primarily focused on the, on the farmhouse. So there's a minimum number of rooms you have to buy. There's a minimum rental for the farmhouse. And we intend to keep that at the farmhouse because it's indoors, it can, it can handle a larger capacity, has much larger kitchen space. And there's more you can do with it. A lot of the weddings that are at the inn, they'll take the lawn and they'll tent it and they'll use it in different ways. You know, they'll have maybe the ceremony under the tree. They'll have, you know, reception on the lawn. Then they'll have dinner in the actual large ballroom. Then they'll have the after-party in the kitchen. So the winery doesn't have all of those different components. It's, it's the restaurant, it's, it's the backyard, it's the vineyard. So it will be primarily more on, for the corporate events that are coming right from the resort over.
So the answer is you are trying to integrate to the extent you can, the winery with, and package it with the experience.
At the resort, yes. So for, for, for local events, it would be more like, the hospital foundation might have, you know, use it during the day. The, you know, Ojai Film Festival, I've talked to both of them. I'm on the hospital board, so I know we're going to definitely want to utilize it. And the Film Festival wants to utilize it and film some, screen, do some screening. So, and that's how it has been traditionally. It's always been that way. It's always been a community gathering place for all the different, you know, charitable causes or beyond here in the valley. So we, we do intend to continue that. There's a number of people that are asking, when's it get open? When's it get open? Because we want to try to get back in there.
Chris, I noticed that there are three gas fire pits.
Yes, sir.
Are those turned on all the time or just, how do you regulate that?
Well, all the gas fire pits at the inn are on a timer. So that you, they do shut off automatically at a certain time. We will do the same thing here. I mean, they, we light them and then we shut them off or they shut off automatically and we have to go back and turn them on again.
So you would light them when, when somebody actually comes to use them?
Yes, they're not, we, we certainly won't be irresponsible with the use of the natural resources and have them just going all, all day long.
Did you consider coming in with a driveway off Country Club Road so that the extra parking would not be entering and exiting on Ojai Avenue?
You know, we, we didn't think about that. It's an interesting idea. I think what we wanted to do was not create another ingress, egress point. We wanted to maintain the two that are already there at the front and, and not have it be more complicated where you have to turn and then come all the way down. And actually, I mean, you don't have the full site plan, but if you were to, if you were to drive to the actual winery site from, I guess that'd be Country Club, it's actually would be, it's quite a few, quite a distance still. A lot of this field remains field, you know, even with the expanded vineyard that, that primarily catches the ability for the shuttle, you know, to cross in. But there's, there's still a lot of field that is, that is empty.
I would just suggest that whoever does that sort of planning, take a look at that. I think that getting the traffic up to, on Country Road to a traffic light would be a worthwhile thing to investigate. I don't know what it does to your property plans, but to just have all that parking across the front is maybe a waste of really nice frontage property. Hide the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, we, we absolutely will. And Kathy's here. But it should be, it will be dense. I mean, the idea is that we don't, you know, you don't want to see, like especially people, you, the reason for the birmingham and all of this plant material is because you don't want to see the road anymore. And if you're at the road, you don't get to see in the back. So we do want to create as much as possible. And we're happy to, if you want to, you know, dictate certain height of hedges that is a condition, we're happy to do that. We're going to do it anyway, you know? And we certainly can raise that fence size from 36 to 42, which is no problem at all.
Those are all good ideas in terms of hiding the parking lot from the view of the road. But I'm wanting you to consider the traffic pattern coming in off Country Club.
Off the Country Club Drive?
Yeah, just.
Okay.
Investigate it.
Yeah, to that, my, like, follow-up there is, are guests of the winery who park in your parking going to be able to take a left out onto, you know, 33 or Ojai Ave? Because now we have two essential parking lots where guests are going to potentially be able to turn left. And just the flow of traffic and that potential for, you know, danger, given it is a winery and people are going to be drinking.
So you're talking about if you're in the winery now and you take a left?
And you're leaving the parking lot. Yeah, are you going to be able to take a left going towards Ventura?
I believe so. You can now.
If, if the traffic is slender.
Yeah. So what, what I'm getting at is the increased traffic coming into town, you know, on the weekends, drinking, people being able to turn left. Has the inn thought about, you know, making sure that you can't take a left and forcing everyone to turn right?
No, we, I mean, we actually haven't because it's, you know, when the winery's been functioning for all those years, it's been working that way. I, I don't, I think that you can turn a left and right when you exit. I'm not exactly sure on the traffic. And we do have Scott Shell that's on as well.
I was going to say, the, the traffic engineer is, is on, online to potentially answer that question. Let's just make sure we're staying with questions and not, I want to, I don't want to get into deliberation at this point. I know the public would like to speak on this matter as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I think I would just add, I guess I had a question about the bike path crossing as well. I know it's like in sort of the works, but I think it'd be important to understand sort of the extents and the degree of management and improvements along that section or how, you know, where it is, how big it is. You know, being that this is kind of a unique thing that OVIS might be able to benefit from. It seems like it might be a, you know, a question to ask how it's, you know, what, it's a, you know, it's a public space. How's it kind of giving back to the public as well?
Right. And just kind of going back to the earlier, we, we started those conversations with the county long ago, just to really understand the feasibility of it because it was such a critical component to, you know, acquiring the property and being able to access it and actually have it as, you know, another outlet for guests at the resort. So we, we definitely plan, and I know we're going to get into the details of how we're going to manage it, you know, maintaining it. We kind of do now too, even when there's graffiti on some of the signs on the bike path, we just take care of it. We just clean it and we just, or if a post falls down, we just put it back up and, and take, you know, we'll make sure that, you know, it's, it's a five diamond, five star resort. We'll make sure that, you know, every part that we manage, you know, meets those standards, both aesthetically as well as from a safety perspective.
Yeah. Because that entrance part in particular, which would be at the head of your property is kind of one of the, it's pretty rugged. So I'm just curious, there's like an improvement happening down. Are there improvements happening along that entire stretch?
Oh, the entire stretch of the bike path?
Well, to, that are within your guys, whatever your.
Whatever, whatever area in which that we can, you know, manage when we do this land lease, lease swap, however this is going to work out. I agree, by the way. I mean, it'd be, it'd be great with, for the whole section to be, you know, maintained at a higher level. So we'll certainly work with the city on that.
Well, and the county, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that the county has been fixing up the bike path, but they're starting down in Ventura and close to the ocean where, where there's, there's some gravity to the political system down there. And so I think we need to put, as a community, put pressure on our county supervisor to upgrade the quality of maintenance of the bike path all the way up. It's kind of a mess. The number of fence posts that have fallen down are relying on the. It's kind of a mess, the number of fence posts that have fallen down or lying on the ground as you drive up through Oakview and up to.
While you're pushing.
Yeah, I want to make sure that we're not getting into deliberation, it sounds like deliberation here, you guys are having cross conversations. I reserve that for after the public has had enough.
Yeah, we'll jump in, sorry, go ahead.
I did have another question about the landscape plan. I was curious if, it looked like there's quite a bit of lighting proposed. And I was curious if, I was curious if, like particularly along the perimeter, where the parking currently is being shown and in the trees, is that, is the lighting in the trees, the MR Universe, is that an uplight or is that a?
Okay, oh, the lighting is down lighting.
It's down lighting.
So that's hung in the trees?
Yeah.
Yeah, all of the lighting meets dark sky friendly requirements. So some of the lighting in the trees, there are some lanterns and then there's also down lighting.
Yeah, okay. One last, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, one last question, just regarding parking, this is kind of a point of clarity. In the proposal, it's outlining that you guys are gonna have a total of 189 total parking spots. And I just wanted to point a clarity, those are not all proposed for this winery, correct?
No, we, that's including, that's just the, all the parking in the vicinity of the, correct?
So then another, another question with that, so considering that you guys are expanding your parking, obviously, are you still gonna be leveraging the overflow parking lot that you guys leveraged today?
We hope not to.
We hope not to.
I mean, that is the idea, is that we would be not parking exactly, especially with, when it rains, it's, we just never have enough parking, it seems like. So this is gonna help us a lot as well.
Oh, that's great, you know, it's, whenever I see those cars parked there, I always concerned about oil leaking into the ground.
Oh, agreed, oil, I mean, it's, you know, people falling, whatnot, we, yes, we definitely want to stay off the field as much as possible.
Okay, cool, I just wanted to point that out, that this was, even though it's included in this packet, it's for, it's serving both purposes.
It absolutely is, and you will see definitely just visually, when you drive by, you'll see a reduction, you know, you might still see it, might be Fourth of July weekend, any really high leisure weekend, like Easter or Fourth of July special holidays, other than that, I don't see a whole lot of parking happening out there. I mean, we do occasionally, you know, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce or whoever, we, you know, we let them use the lot for overflow parking here and there. You know, just to work with the local community, but for our valet and our off property parking, we intend to try to mitigate that as much as possible with this new parking.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, do you have any plans for amplification, excuse me, outside for your outside dining? Music, any sound at all planned?
Yes, there'll be, like speakers under the eaves of the exterior, the overhangs, yes, just, yeah, there'll be, you know, some music. Again, it won't be anything outside of the normal restaurant level kind of music. Or if you went to the Oak Restaurant, or Jamie's, or Oak is probably a better example, if you went to the Oak, it'd be very similar to that type of music and that experience.
When you, when you have an event scheduled or requested, do you control in any way the music that they're bringing in, like I assume that you bring in bands and?
We absolutely can, we can, we, I mean, it's, you know, at the end of the day, it's private property and when we're renting something, we can, we can tell them what the rules are and how they can utilize a space, including music. We have, there's a number, I mean, we, as you know, we do more events than anyone, right, in the valley. So we're very accustomed to making sure that we know the decibel level maximums, certainly know the cutoff time. We know what works, what doesn't work, and we'll continue that with this venue as well. I am confident we will manage it better than it's been managed before.
Judy, if you, if you go through the document, they're committing to dropping to 55 dB where our city is 65 dB. So I'm, that's, I think in the case of events and in the evening, dropping down to 65, 55, which is probably below the sound generated by the traffic.
The fact that they have their own guests to protect gives me confidence.
Exactly, it's, the left hand doesn't want to hurt the right hand in this situation, which again goes back to one of the reasons that we are like, we should probably, you know, defensively acquire this. I also have met with, you know, one of the neighbors that's on the road, just the other day, to talk about, you know, their challenges with what they experienced with noise, with Topamoun Winery, with events. And so I, we are looking in, actually, we talked about looking into some acoustical panels to put onto the cinder black wall on the back of the property. Possible, possible the birmingham, you know, we're gonna look into what we can do to help them, not just them, but there are, there's about, but there's two, there's two houses that would probably be most impacted by this, the location of this facility. So we will certainly be making sure that both of them are, you know, we're cognizant of that living experience.
I appreciate you guys understanding that and understanding the noise issues on the prior facility.
Question for Lucas.
Before, before, questions for staff?
I want to catch Chris, but.
Okay, go ahead, and then we'll switch out.
In other situations that this commission has dealt with, we have seen the number of events planned and limited. And this situation does not seem to have any limits for the number of events. Is that, is this situation different than like the one down the street that I'm not supposed to mention?
Well, a couple of the other ones that have come before this commission and have been deliberated, deliberated pretty heavily, right?
Yes.
So this, they're adopting and taking in the original conditional use permit that was a part of, of the winery in 2014 with minor revisions in early 2015. During that time, that wasn't the same commission that we have today, and it wasn't necessarily the same concerns that were being vetted at that time. Obviously, that has evolved over the last several years with various conditions that have been added. And I would say the one in particular that you're pointing to that I'm not going to mention, was vetted very heavily. But that was also because of a lot of concerns, code compliance issues, a host of traffic issues that were identified ongoing with the events. And not much of an interest in the good faith of the property owner or the manager of that site wanting to find solutions. Felt as if the rules didn't apply to them. I think you're seeing and hearing a very different tone tonight. The fact that they're willing to reduce without even discussing the noise restrictions from 65 to 55.
Is big.
When that was discussed with the other parties, it never ended up going anywhere, right? Mainly because those rules are in place for a reason, because it's been vetted through the process. So I think it's just an interesting conversation, and I think to your point, I think it's worth bringing up as a question. But recognizing that you have a different model, probably to a certain point, in terms of what they're looking to, to have here, so.
If I could add one further point for the commission's consideration, the other sites that have, that are on our minds are sites where the event space was largely displacing existing parking. So a limitation on event space was necessary for the commission to impose, or in some cases council to impose, because they were replacing parking, closing it and then running events. This facility is structured to be different, it has parking and event space separate.
Right, which is good. So Chris, it's, it seems as though there are no limits to the number of events that you could rent it out for or hold there. How do you see the business, if you rent it out every night to an event, you're going to lose the restaurant business and you're gonna lose the advantage to the inn of having that facility available? So I assume that you have to figure out a balance, how do you do that?
Well, it's interesting you bring that up, because I feel like I discussed this with a couple of the commissioners over there. I remember when the winery, the Topamoun Winery was functioning as is, it was closed a lot for a private event. You didn't know when it was open or when it was closed, there was this pop up sign and it was like, oh, it's not open today. Right, so the way that we designed this is that this restaurant would be open and functioning, it'd be open as much as possible. And you've got the space now to have a private function or an event, but also continue to operate the restaurant and stay open. In the, other than someone buying, taking over the whole thing, which would be rare and, you know, might happen a couple of times a year, it's, it should function as being open and not have that confusion of it's open if it's not closed, like it has before.
One more question, I keep thinking of them, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's why we're here.
You've got seating, indoor seating, that was 72 and it's going down to 48, correct?
Yes.
The area has doubled in size, basically.
Correct, well.
Why is that? How do we know that, you know, next year you decide to fill the place up with tables and suddenly have a huge business?
Well, a couple of things, number one, the overall footprint expansion, the majority of that is your kitchen, your bathrooms and that private dining room, the vast majority. The number of people in the kitchen might be more like 10 people, but it's, there's those 10 people that are in that, you know, the full facility of that kitchen, which still triggered us to have to put 20 parking spots in for that low of people in that much square footage. So the way that, and I know I don't have a lot of interior, I don't have any interior elevations to explain the experience, but when you do walk into the new winery, to your right is that whole, it's kind of a retail quasi kind of charcuterie cheese shop, right? So you already have all that footprint that is taken up by racks of wine for people to purchase, to take to a table. And you also have that large table, what would you call it, like a, a large island, a marble island, where the people are behind it that will be actually making your charcuterie boards and whatnot, so that takes up space. So there's no, there's not more tables you can just put in.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So, but on the left hand side where the bar and the lounge seating is, is soft seating, it's really not as, you know, the renderings make it feel, you know, large, like the renderings make the kitchen size feel
Huge.
Look bigger than what's there now, and it's the same height, so as the building is now.
Okay, you've got a gas fireplace in the middle of the dining room, right?
In the lounge, yes.
Lounge, okay. There is seating for dining room around that?
Yes, there's like couch, two chairs type of a, like a lounge seating, like the NEF lounge has, almost exactly kind of that sort of a layout.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Just one, last one. Currently, the inn has like a locals discount, and we all love that, is that gonna be extended to the winery as well?
One million percent.
Yeah, I think people are gonna love that.
A hundred percent.
Awesome.
Yeah, so it is an outlet of the resort.
That we can't condition, but we appreciate the extension.
No, the in crowd card, it's an outlet, it's an outlet of the resort, so not only will be guests be able to sign to their room if they wanted to, any local can use their discount card, absolutely.
Awesome, well, thank you guys, thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you so much for your time, appreciate it.
So we'll open it up for public comment and we'll ask staff questions, we might ask you guys a few more questions, if that's okay. So Lucas, I'll go ahead and open it up, public comment? All right, so we'll open it up for public comment, and I did want to, Larry, I have you up, but I didn't know if it was for item one or if it was for this? It's for this, okay, you're up, you're up. And I wish we could bring a mic to you.
Larry Steingold.
Good to see you.
Obviously, there's been a lot of thought into this, and having spent 40 years in real estate, you've done your due diligence with a lot of help from planning to make it sort of weave your way through.
We can't hear you.
Weave your way.
Speak into the mic, please speak, please speak to the commission, thank you.
Sorry, weave your way through the system. We're in the middle of getting a new tree ordinance, so maybe this should be pushed back a little bit so that the new tree ordinance can go into effect and see how it affects this. Somebody mentioned that this should be a concept review, rather than a review for voting on the actual deal tonight, to allow more review, more ideas. The idea of a chain link fence probably should, around the property should probably be landscaped on the outside so it doesn't look like a chain link fence around a property. Traffic, traffic will be increased on Ojai Avenue only by the fact that there's more parking. I mean, that's just a fact, okay? Also, I believe that the south side of Ojai Avenue is intended to be sidewalked by the state or the Ojai, or the city, part of the second phase of the ATP, if that's correct. Maybe the developer should pay for the sidewalk, as most developers do when they develop their properties. Maybe, and this is one of the largest projects I've seen in Ojai, and I've been here seven years, so this is pretty good, good size, and it's good for the community. Maybe we can get a quid pro quo, maybe get two, three acres of parking, south of the city, for our parking, for the city parking, so that we can limit the amount of cars parking in the city. But it's a trade off. Wedding venues, 45 seats inside, I've been to the winery, it's very nice. Are they gonna have big tents, are they gonna have this? They should, from my view, they should be limited to the same number of activities as the other two that shall not be mentioned in the city, and things like that, and maybe there should be a one year review as like the other two that shall not be mentioned. So I think for the time, I just think this should be pushed back a little bit for more review, because this is a really good project, but it's a really big project for the city. And to just approve it without a little more thought might be wise, because based on what people were saying online, for what it's worth, there's a lot of comments and questions, and this is for the city, and you represent the city, and not, actually, you do represent Ojai Valley, and also because they're a taxpayer here, right?
Thank you, Larry.
Stay true.
Careful on that foot. Mr. Wirick?
Here we are at Christmas again. Holidays, remember the 65 foot cell tower over the holiday season? Remember the NEF lounge, holiday season? Here we are, 114 page report, no previous concept review. Obviously, concepts were adopted and fully developed without community input. I would urge this planning commission to take the comments, take everything in, and defer action until the community has time to fully engage outside of the distracted holiday season. It's important, this is a potential character changing project for the city of Ojai. And it represents, for example, a sharp shift in design preferences. Remember the Chevron station and making sure that it was sort of the mission compatible design? And here we have a farmhouse motif, which if you remember, a previous planning commission accepted on the basis that you couldn't see it from public rights away. And here we are going to use that motif as a precedent for a public right of way. So these are big changes, and I really believe that you owe it to the public to allow full engagement outside of the distraction of holiday season. You know, don't make the mistake that has been made over past years. And do not allow the timeline of the applicant to dictate what is best for the community. I think that a deferral outside of the distraction of the holiday season, so that there can be a full engagement and digestion and public input is highly appropriate. And I'll give you one example from the, from the traffic report, for example. I noticed LOS was used, Level of Service was used as the premise for the traffic study, when the Office of Planning and Budget for the State of California has dictated for years now that you should use VMT. What's that? that you should use VMT. What's that all about? Uh, what are the assumptions behind the fifty-fifty, uh, prediction, the traffic study for local versus, um, uh, in use, when we just heard a lot about there's no limit on corporate events? And, uh, you know, in, that, that, uh, how does, how does all of this show internal consistency? So I would ask you to please provide, oh, and then one other issue. You know, one of the precepts of, of, of planning is you're not supposed to do things piecemeal. Well, we have a major other piece of property right there that is owned by, uh, the inn in terms of where the Boku used to be, which is no longer there. We're selling walled-off kind of, you know, separation in terms of being able to circulate, how's this may be developed in terms of along that way from, all the way from the Rotary Park to this site, to the parking area. It, are, are we, you know, what, what is the sort of master plan? Are we going to be having walled-off areas? Are we going to have circulation in terms of, of future design? So please, please, continue this item till January.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, Sarah Otterstrom?
Hi, um, I'm Sarah Otterstrom. I'm a PhD scientist in ecology. My husband and I and our four children live in Ojai on Country Club Road. I would like to share three concerns. Noise, the memo from the city seems inadequate when there are hundreds of homes within earshot of the site. The memo lacks information about why the CU, why the CUP change request. The maximum capacity of the venue, we don't even know. And, or what events and activities will be permitted in the new indoor and outdoor spaces? Though the venue may be open from noon to ten or eleven for special events, given its design to accommodate private and corporate events, when will the setup and teardown take place? What city staff will be available to the public to respond to the complaints after hours? The environment, the tree study lacks clarity about which trees will be removed, including the ones that have lined the public trail for the past four decades. As noted by the arborist, an additional nesting bird study should be conducted. I did not find that bird study, but for the last decade, a pair of great horned owls and red-tailed hawks have nested in eucalyptus along the trail. Also, on many nights, deer, coyote, and even mountain lion visit the lavender lot. How will the lighting and the fencing and the trellises be managed to enable their continued presence within our city? The city memo argues a categorical exemption for the provision of this California Environmental Quality Act, but the project is requesting a change in the CUP and tripling the footprint, including six separate trellises twelve feet tall by twenty and thirty-four feet in length, and a new multipurpose room and a garbage facility. All this is not consistent with a CEQA exemption. Safety, the Ojai Valley Trail will be repaved soon, and better, will have better connections to Miners Oaks, increasing speeds and volume of use. It's a public's trail. Also, one can imagine trucks moving on that shuttle roadway to deliver chairs, tables, and events to set up for the inn. How will the vehicular movement over the trail be managed and enforced? Public Works remarked that the developer shall dedicate pedestrian sidewalk easements. Who will pay for and build the sidewalks to keep the winery patrons away from the roads? I want to ask with a show of hands, well, I don't need to ask this. You guys disclosed at the beginning of the meeting that you guys, some of you have had, um, recent visits to the inn. But I did not hear how many of you had complimentary meals while you were there. And if you were to walk over the project site this morning, you would have seen a hubbub of construction prep underway. What is happening? I urge the staff to file a more complete and objective design document, and for the tree permit, the CUP and the DRBP to be reviewed by the public in separate meetings and not over the holiday. The public deserves more information and more time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, uh, Rochelle Boliver? I could think I got that last name right.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I'm so tall, I always feel like, yeah, you can hear me? Okay. Oh, this is a tough one. Okay. I can, hope I can speak with good intentions and honor the four agreements. I want to use my words for good, and may my words inspire my children and everyone to be kind, as we learn to understand one another and live together. I speak for the peacemakers everywhere on this one. I'm born and raised in Ojai. I'm a resident. My family owns a home in District Four. Our home and neighbors are a residential zone R1 on the city of Ojai's general land use current zoning map. Our homes share a road with the Ojai Valley Inn. We use their secured gates to enter our home by car and by foot. My family embraces the added security the hotel offers, and we find many perks to living on the resort and understand the resort noise, traffic, special events that come along with this. My husband golfs, my kids play tennis, and we enjoy dining, shopping, and our in-family community on the hotel property. We feel beyond blessed and privileged to raise our daughters in this beautiful, safe, and clean space, where the staff and other frequent locals have become like our family. The location of the hotel is perfect, historic, and the reason that people come to Ojai. However, Larry's dream that was Topa Mountain Winery was short-lived when he was unable to resolve the issues of noise, which events on this property created. My husband is a professional in sound and live music and tried everything to help Larry and his team contain the sound, only to fail and have Larry shut down. This is the reason we were told he went out of business. I would like to note that the events and the weddings at the Ojai Valley Inn are world-renowned. Google "Ojai Valley Inn wedding" and you will see some of the most stunning events you can find. These events need fast-working construction, manpower to set up, trucks, equipment, flowers, dishes, late-night working productions, crew, which create noise, traffic, and parking. The inn currently handles these seamlessly with the existing events that they have now. Chris kindly met with my husband and I, and he promised us he would do everything to resolve the noise. It is not possible to allow, it is not possible without allowing major infrastructures to be in place on this property. He mentioned birmingham and screening. If this is going to move forward, please make sure that anything that he's required like this is allowed so that all of us neighbors do not have to hear the noise. If this passes, the Ojai Valley Inn needs larger walls, let them. If they need to enclose more spaces, let them. If they need to put things around air conditioning and utilities, let them. We don't want to hear it. He needs to be allowed to do what he has to do to contain the noise. We don't want to hear events in our living room. We wish Chris the best of luck. I did discuss with him, I would love to see something quieter go in, adult-style bungalows were once mentioned, a spa, yoga. With that said, we leave the choices of how the inn decides what is best for their establishment to set up, and we are grateful to have Chris hear our concerns and promise to work with us, and we hope all businesses are given the opportunity to thrive and neighbors' ability to live in their homes securely. Happy holidays, peace and light.
Thank you, thank you, so. Uh, Mr. Miley?
Hello. All the emails that have come to the commission on the website raise questions about implications from this proposed project. Trail crossings, barn structure, increased noise, entrance to the city, degradation, traffic, egress traffic, and implications as to what impact it will have on the economy downtown. Hope you can see that this needs to be continued. We need another meeting in January so that more people can be aware of this and can express their thoughts and comments, and you can respond to the many questions that are in the emails on the website. My family has lived in Ojai since nineteen-sixty-eight. I have been supportive of past inn developments. Adding a winery and a restaurant to the Ojai Valley Inn and spa seems suitable to the many inn guests. Not so, in my opinion, for those living in town or for those visiting tourists staying at other lodgings. Several issues come to mind. In the narrative, the proponent mentions less traffic downtown as tourists and guests will stop at the winery restaurant rather than travel into town. That may come true, but shorting the downtown area customers is certainly not a benefit to Ojai's general economy. It's like having a big box store at the edge of town. We have wineries downtown, which will be competing with this expansion. So what's the view from Ojai Avenue? Will we see, will the current walls be taken down? Will there be farmhouse structures? Size isn't important. I don't support having a row of cars parked along Ojai Avenue so that we can see rows and rows of car parking or empty spaces. Access and egress is an important issue. Cars should not have egress onto Ojai Avenue, should be through Country Club Drive. And I think that the crossing is a real problematic issue. You should look at it from the point of view of disability, electric bikes, regular bikes, horses, seniors, skateboards, young people, hikers and walkers. Supporting the inn in their desire to enhance the experience for their guests and provide resource services, resource services to some Ojai residents seems worthy. Please, though, be considerate and careful not to demean the rest of Ojai's experience. The visual picture from Ojai Avenue should be quiet, subtle, and a pink moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Alright, Colette Miller, I believe? I got that name, first name right?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The historic bucolic Ojai Valley Inn has been visited by people worldwide and has an excellent reputation. The inn provides guests with lodging, restaurants, pools, golf, tennis, and pickleball. The city, in return, reaps the benefit of taxes, which helps keep our city afloat financially. The inn has proposed an expansion that would greatly impact Ojai residents with noise and congestion. In order to access the proposed new venue, shuttles would be allowed to drive over the bike path, many without caution, especially the children on e-bikes and the elderly like me. I suggest the shuttle and buses use the employee parking area to access Ojai Avenue and transport guests to the winery, which allows for residents and golfers to be spared noise and congestion. The employee parking lot is located south of the Rotary Community Park and contiguous to the inn property, thus enabling buses and shuttles to enter and exit on Highway Thirty-three, which eliminates congestion on Country Club Road. I do not have a solution for the enormous building and too long events, and can only say, we are a small town, and the addition being proposed is not fitting with the Ojai so many of us cherish. Thank you.
Thank you, Colette. Alright, that's it with, uh, public comments here. Do, uh, do we have any online? Oh, sorry, one more. Thank you. And sir, if you don't mind stating your name.
Hi, I'm Randy Mudge, resident of Ojai. Your comments earlier about bringing the ocean to Ojai, just.
Speak to the microphone, please.
Just, just gave me a, a great idea. Turn the whole property into a wave pool.
Could, can you, can you speak to the planning commission, sir? Sorry, yeah, thank you.
We did not hear you.
Yeah.
We suggest that he, he turn the whole property into a wave pool. That way, he brings the ocean to Ojai.
Yeah.
Plus, it's a moneymaker.
Yeah.
But, all kidding aside, um, it's clear that, uh, a specific plan should be considered for the entire Ojai Valley Inn property and the surrounding properties, since there will be development on them someday, and some sort of master plan should be in place so that we can see the framework for the entire development to make sure that it's harmonious with, in itself, and also with the city of Ojai. That said, the staff report says that there are no view impacts to Ojai Avenue when half of the frontage will be covered with parking, and behind that will be a six-foot wood fence. So clearly, the staff report is wrong. I'm most distressed by the parking on Ojai Avenue. A parking lot the size of the entire property of Boku, that parking lot is gonna be put on the other side of the winery. Go out there and stand on the site and, and look at how much of that frontage will be parking lot. I mean, it's clear. Uh, I also think the project is underparked. They used a square footage of the building as their, uh, yardstick, not the seating inside, which would have enabled less parking. But they didn't count the hundred and something outdoors, uh, seating spaces. Food will be served outside, so why isn't that counted? And I know that that's how, you know, the, the transportation gods do their thing, but you need to look at that. So I'll try and go through quickly the rest of the things. Uh, was the traffic study done, did, did that include, um, events? Large events when the place is full? Or was it just an average daily, you know, fifty percent from the, from the inn and fifty percent local traffic? Is there gonna be delivery, DoorDash, does that get included? How many trips is that? Sorry. Let's see. The, uh, bike path crossing, there should be no change in paving to the bike path. The change in paving should happen for the carts coming across so that they're required to path, to, to stop, and that the bike path clearly has the right-of-way. If you pave that with special paving, then the, that will indicate that the right-of-way is to the carts crossing the path, which is what we don't want. To the architecture quickly, um, I don't have a problem with the architecture, but I think that the, the addition is far too much, is far too warehouse-like, even though it does look somewhat like a barn warehouse, but I think the north and the west, east, west elevations, um, need help. Trees and architecture.
Thank you, Andy.
I've got another couple pages.
Oh, thank you, Andy, appreciate it. Three minutes. Alright, um, we have any comments online?
Yes, we have one.
We have one, okay. Uh, go ahead. And, and if you don't mind, is, is it Diane?
Yes, it's Diane.
Okay, go ahead, Diane.
Yes.
We can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, super. Um, my concern, um, I, I share concerns of all of the speakers ahead of me. I think that they all have made very valid points, and I, uh, support all of them. My personal concern, aside from all of that, is the crossing across the bike trail. I am totally blind, and I walk through that part of the bike trail a minimum of once a day, uh, tw- twice a day when I go round-trip, sometimes more than that. Um, the construction process is going to be a major difficulty. There is no safe way to walk from my home to the shopping center or anything down at the Y or over by the high school or the hospital or any of that. The hot, the sidewalk on Ojai Avenue is unsafe. It comes a point where the sidewalk ends, it's not an option. So your construction going across the bike trail is going to put me, my guide dog, anybody else with a visual impairment at tremendous personal risk. I don't quite comprehend why somebody would need to take a shuttle bus from the existing gate, the few feet to the bike trail, walk across the bike trail, which is not wide, walk across the hot horse trail, and onto your property on the other side. I don't comprehend why people can't walk. And I would really like to understand that. I just don't understand that. The sound, if you guys keep it down to fifty-five decibels. Um, I live nearby the, uh, previous thing that nobody will name, and, uh, they had been the bully in the neighborhood for a long time, and they are less of a bully, but they still are the bully in the neighborhood. And I hope that you guys will stick with your promises and not become a second bully. Um, that's my comments. I, I have tremendous concerns about the crossing, and I don't really comprehend why people just can't walk. That's it.
Alright, thank you, Diane. Anyone else online?
Yes, we have one more.
One more, okay. Okay. And it's, is that Brian?
It is.
Okay, we see your lovely picture. If you don't mind staying here.
Hello. I'm out of state and visiting people. I came in late on the meeting for, because of the drive. Just to not repeat what people have said, but the, the information that Bill Wirick mentioned, I fully support what he had to say. I may be the only commissioner, I know Craig has come back, that was around 10 years ago when the inn came to us about the NEF lounge. And the planning commission turned it down, the Historic Preservation Commission turned it down. They filed an appeal. All of us were called in just before Christmas to have that appeal heard. Again, goes back to the timing. Why is it always around Christmas time when this happens? No idea. I, when I read this in the paper or read the document, they were talking about the barn and how this is going to talk, you know, compare with the historic nature of the barn that's in the back, which I've never seen. When people asked me about that, I commented that I'm pretty sure that we, none of our landmarks that are city landmarks that are listed are barns. The, and it seemed like when they were making the tie-in for the farm-to-table type thing and having the barn and how that would take us back to what we, you know, first were known for, it seems like that's, that's a bit of a reach. Again, barns aren't a central thing to what's going on right now. Farm-to-table are, I believe, are generally row crop type things. Haven't seen anyone build a big barn since. And the timing on this, I didn't have, got real busy, didn't have much time because I've only known about this for, for just a few days. And I stayed pretty close to what's going on and hadn't a clue that this was coming before us. And so I'm just surprised that this seems to be very, very much rushed. And I agree with the folks that this needs to, I would, you know, suggest this needs to be tabled so that the public can get more information, more updated, and come back to you with a clearer understanding of what's being, what's being shared. I do appreciate the, the information that was shared today and outlining exactly what the layout was. And, but way too fast. The barn on the front is not going to be looked at as historic and the timing is just off. So thank you very much for your consideration and good luck.
Thank you. Okay, any more online?
Yes, we do.
One more. Okay.
Tom?
Tom Adams?
Hi, I'm Tom Adams. I'm Ojai local. I recently moved to Ojai City proper from Miners Oaks. I've been a resident of Ventura County for something in the neighborhood of 20 years. I appreciate all of that Ojai has to offer and the inn. I'm good friends with many, many Ojai residents and I'm an attorney that handles some land use issues from time to time. I mostly just want to re, just to, just to give an extra voice to the public comments that have been made already. I, I think that they've all been very, very well stated and show a tremendous amount of work that still needs to be done before this project could be approved, especially getting more outreach and taking into consideration the, the lack of studies that were raised by, for example, Ms. Otterstrom, leading to the trees and the animals and the significant concerns that would relate to the paving over the bike path for the use of the disabled or the, or the youth or even horses. Pretty much anybody that, that would be traveling that at their normal speed would likely be surprised by the sudden change in character of the path. I also think that it was really well stated that the problems at the winery that was previously there felt or found with noise concerns make it so that, once you've approved this, there's really nothing that you can do to, to fix that problem. You're certainly not going to shut down the Ojai Valley Inn if they have trouble with noise. It's much easier to do that to a small business. And so I think that you need something to demonstrate the ability to monitor and quell those noise problems that were found at the previous location. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Hi, is that it online?
Yep, it looks like that.
All right. So we'll close public comment and move on to questions for staff. Awesome. Anybody have questions for staff? Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. My first question comes to number of events under the existing CUP. Is it correct to say that there is not a, you know, ceiling on the number of events that they can do a year? Potentially 365 events?
So as was stated previously by the director, this CUP was approved, you know, quite a long time ago and the CUP, the parameters of the CUP are in this, are in these conditions of approval, which are the hours of the events and to avoid commuter times for traffic. So there are not, there's not a limit on the time. And I do want to say that, so there is a CUP for this site that runs with the land.
But you said there's, there's a not a
There is not a ceiling. There's not a ceiling for the number of events.
Number of events, okay.
Could that be added?
The planning commission can add conditions at their pleasure, yes.
With the appropriate findings, yes. A numeric, numeric limit, number on the number of events could be added with the appropriate findings. What is
What do you mean by with the appropriate?
We would have to just tie it back to how the numeric, a number of limits or number of, limit on the number of events ties back to one of the findings, tying back to perhaps the community character findings or avoiding adverse impacts on the surrounding land use and things like that. We have to connect it back to how does imposing a limit on the number of events allow the findings to be made? But assuming that set of findings can be made, then yeah, a number of, a numeric limit could be imposed.
Would one of those findings be historic, you know, number of events allowed for other CUPs that the board has approved?
If we can tie them to be similar, similarly, it'd have to be similarly situated. So limits on other sites that are, have other characteristics that themselves lend to event limitations versus this site and this, its characteristics. So as long as we can connect it back to the harm we're trying to solve and how that harm is solved by a number of, an event, limit on the number of events, we can make the record.
I think we also managed to come up with limits to the size of the event.
Sure.
So size and number of events would be something to consider.
And if we wanted to go down that path, the same thing about connecting it back to defensibility of those findings. So if we're doing, looking at a limit on the size of a particular set of events, how that ties back to the capacity of the site itself and the facilities. The other times the commission has put together new limits on, you know, annual events, large, 12 a year, medium, 30 a year, things like that, those tied back in part to the size of facility issue. So again, we'd have to make the connection back for the findings to be defensible. That could be assessed further if the commission is so desired.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think Mr. Seibert had a comment.
Yeah, I was just, I know we've talked about other sites that should not be named here. Here's what I want to preface, and I know Matt's speaking from an attorney's brain and mindset. Each of these projects that have come forward have been vetted on their own merits, correct? It's the same thing here. Yes, you're looking at past practices, but just recognize that the past practices were because of the past results that we had seen or anticipated. This, in terms of what we're looking at here today and tonight for, for review and consideration is not even in the same wheelhouse to a certain degree. The fact that they're coming in and they're saying that they're willing to reduce the noise level from 65 decibels to 55? Is there another example of that in the city of Ojai right now?
I think that's awesome, but the counterpoint is, you know, I don't know these other examples. I'm brand new to the planning commission, so I don't know who you're talking about.
We can't tell you.
And that's great. That's great. So what I am getting at is I don't know how many events they're allowed to have a year. Let's say it's 10. If this new winery is able to have 365 events, it doesn't matter what the decibel level is of the volume of, you know, the, the noise, right? I forget what it's called. Instead, it really matters about like how much of an impact that's going to have on the surrounding community, the neighbors, as well as if this place ends up being actually accessible to the community, which is something the community wants, right? We want to be able to visit places that are going in and to these properties in Ojai.
So to that point, just real quick, to that point, you're absolutely correct. Context in terms of, of it being consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and the community context as well. Extremely important, absolutely. Reviewed and considered with each and every project that comes before this body. Okay, so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I agree with you 100%. The noise piece is, has been the piece that we have, that has been discussed before this body ad nauseam in terms of looking at, and that has been the piece that I, in terms of looking at a project like this, has been the linchpin to whether or not this body has felt comfortable with that. And I think limiting the number of events, recognizing that that, that, that number, that threshold was at the limitation per code. In terms of enforcement, I just want to speak to the enforcement piece. I know there was a couple of, of pieces that were identified by the community. I want to just, if I could, just address a couple of those pieces since we're in the Q and A portion tonight. I've already discussed the noise. 65 to 55 is, is pretty significant. And I think that's something to be considered. From a design standpoint, there's a lot of discussion and concern regarding the design going from a mission revival to, to what we're seeing here tonight in terms of the farm, farmhouse design. Yes, it's tying to and paying homage to, to the history of Ojai. I don't want to go as far as to say that we have landmarks that are literally barn design. That doesn't exist, right? There's, there's certainly consideration and a different process for, by way which we vet that. It's a different body for that matter. From a tree standpoint, if I could have, could I have you come up and speak to the, the number of trees that are being removed and then the number of trees that are being replanted? Because I'm kind of curious about that myself. There's just an understanding of and a recognition that there are eight, I think is what I heard, that are protected trees, that are oaks and oak varieties?
Yes. I'm not sure if the commissioners had a chance to actually walk the site. Hello, fellow commissioners, I used to be
Hello. Yes, good to see you again.
But if you did have a chance and you happened to have the report or the plans with you, these trees happen to be growing along a chain link fence that divides the golf course and an existing parking lot. And the trees are growing right along the fence line and they're all, if you had a chance to look at them, are growing through the chain link fence. They're leaning, they're actually compromised and not healthy because of the conditions. So, you know, basically birds land on the top of a fence, carry the acorns, so they drop from adjacent trees. There's a lot of leaf litter and duff there and a lot of, this is just common, that ceilings will sprout next to a fence. And that's the situation. So those trees are coming out, but because they are protected species, even though they don't technically have what you would call value, yes, they are oak trees. But the mitigation is, we actually on, let me find out what page I forgot this on, oh, actually it's on sheet L dash zero.
Is that on attachment?
It's on the plan set. This is just to reduce what
On the plan itself, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and so it's the first sheet in the landscape portion. So it'll be after the architect's plans. And once you find that up at the top, right in the middle of the top of the sheet, it says tree permit, and that just has a number that we don't have exactly yet.
Okay.
But it'll say, it says preliminary tree remediation value. And this links back to the Arbus report. And if you have a further question, I've got it right here as well. So those trees that are coming out were evaluated and given a dollar value. The total is $21,200. And then if you look below that, there's another chart, it says replacement value. And I'm showing four scenarios there because this is a, you know, design review, the construction documents haven't been done yet, the size of the trees have not been determined. But for instance, to equal that dollar value of the $21,200, you would need to plant 43 24-inch box or 16 36-inch box, 48-inch box or 4 60-inch box. So as required, this project will require an MWLO or an MWLO submittal and that includes, you know, a construction document of a planting plan, irrigation and hydrozone plan and soil testing. And on that plan, it'll be specified what size those trees are going to be. We may even exceed, you know, that dollar value, but it will certainly be met and, and has to get approved before the building permit is issued, if I'm correct.
Correct. So it sounds like it's a 43 16 or 4 replacement scenario.
Yeah, and it could be a combination of those, but no matter what, we have the values there and those are the, you know, unit prices that are based on the construction industry or the landscape industry. So it might be, you know, maybe there's several 48s or several 60s, but the total value will be demonstrated on that landscape submittal package.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I apologize, I'm not sure what the 60 and that sort of thing is.
What does that mean?
Yeah, what does that mean?
So basically the trees, plant containers, if you've ever gone to the nursery, you'll see, you know, sometimes wooden boxes.
Yep.
The box sizes usually start at 24. That means they're 24 by 24 inches.
Okay, I see.
Square typically.
So that determines like the, will determine the size of
Yeah. And potentially, you know, I mean, they could even put a larger than a 60-inch box. It could be a 72 or 84-inch. We're not sure yet, but no matter what, that dollar value of $21,200 will have to have been met
Right.
on the landscape plans and installed.
And is it the same sort of, is it, is it oak trees, same species?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, the existing species were the eight coast live oak or Corcus agrofolia
Yeah.
that would be coming out. And then we're proposing the replacement trees are Corcus agrofolia and/or the other native to our valley, Corcus lobata, which is the valley oak.
Okay, got it. All right.
Just for, how does the, the size of the box relate to the, the, no, the width of the, of the trunk?
Could you say that again, please?
How does the size of the, I always talk about the caliper of the tree. So how does it relate to that? Because I box, I don't know.
Yes.
So that the ball is 60 inches, but what's
Right. So basically there are nursery standards and I, to tell you the truth, I won't be able to pull it out of my head right now. But there are nursery standards where a certain sized box trees, in order for it to be sold, the trunk has to be, the caliper has to be a certain dimension.
Yeah.
And so that would be met as also.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions?
I'm okay. Oh, I did have one question. There was some public comments that were submitted regarding an EA report. And it was outlining some of the nesting birds that are in some of the trees.
Yes.
Impacts on those nesting birds.
Related to the amount of, or the timeframe at which this work would be done.
And if you go to the Arbus report and if you go to page, it's attachment D, page 2 of 15, at the bottom of the page, it says nesting birds. And it says no active nesting birds were observed in any of these trees. That was at the time of the Arbus, consulting Arbus going out to do the report. However, prior to commencing construction, the trees should be examined again to determine if there are any nesting birds present. This is especially true between February 1st and August 15th. And if you read further through the report, there's a lot of requirements and, you know, protection and And if you read further through the report, there's a lot of requirements and, you know, protection and restrictions. And so if there are any reports or, you know, report of nesting birds, then the work will have to be conducted at the right timing of the year.
Okay. I guess what the.
Yeah, and that's typical. I know I've been on a lot of projects where we've had to wait or definitely do the monitoring because we don't know when the construction is going to start. So prior to that happening, the arborists will contact it and will go back out. Make the determination.
And in this, in this letter, it was calling out the EIA, the environmental impact analysis, and it was mentioning that it was, there was one that was done in two thousand and two. And that there was no need to do another one. And in that analysis, they they discovered nesting birds, raptors, owls, and the eucalyptus trees that surround, that are up and down the bike path.
So the question is, why are we?
Question is, do, are we, are we requiring another environmental impact analysis? Or are we addressing the nesting birds in another type of range? It looks like we are calling them out here, but does that, does that also look at the ones that are in the, uh, the eucalyptus trees that are, you know, non-protective trees?
Well, they'll be looking at those too, you know, even if the trees are going to be removed. But I think I'm going to refer that to staff. Um, maybe you can respond to that. I don't know the answer to that.
So, yeah, the nesting birds concern is covered through the proposed conditions. Condition number nine on page six requires compliance with the tree preservation, protection and maintenance measures as Ms. Nolan has outlined. Um, those are also covered, and I forget the the sheet number, but the the first page of the landscaping sheets that has on the lower left, tiny little letters, tree protection conditions. One of them is that requirement for an assessment by an arborist of each tree, whether of any species, not just the protected oaks, but also the eucalyptus species that are going to be removed, which would in part assess for any nesting birds at the time of each removal.
Okay.
So that all you picked up. On the second question in the public comment letter, this site is not part of the site that was analyzed in the two thousand and two EIA, which analyzed the existing inn site at that time. So this site is separate. Obviously, they're connecting the two through the bike path connection, but it's not part of what was analyzed in O two. So it doesn't tie back to that. There's not a requirement for this project, which is on separate parcels, to do a whole re, whole scale redo of the entire inn's EIS because they're not changing the rest of the inn. They're not modifying any guest rooms or any of the other metrics that were approved with that project's last approval. It's a separate site, hence the recommendation is to use, rely on a couple of applicable CEQA exemptions for this site. But as noted, the concern regarding nesting birds is met with the conditions of approval as proposed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Can you, can you, um, clarify, just from a design perspective, there's a lot of trees being removed that are kind of, I mean, that are along the perimeter of the bike path. It's sort of on on the south side. That, um, I guess I'd be curious to hear how those and, you know, the oaks being a part of them, how those are, you know, what the relationship of those are to the project in a way. I mean, a lot of it's happening on the, uh, the OVIS's kind of current campus. There's a few on the other side where the winery is, but then there's, really, there's a good chunk on the other side. I'm just kind of curious how that relates or what that decision is about and then what, you know, I guess, so that, and it's also an element that's not really currently being expressed in the proposed design.
Yes. So, um, the area that you're looking at, um, and if you had a chance to go out to the site, right adjacent to the, um, the bike path, bike trail, between there and say the empty lot or the lavender lot, you know, there are a lot of eucalyptus, mostly predominantly eucalyptus. There are some oaks in there. We actually had those, um, eucalyptus assessed, the arborist was there and I was with the arborist. And there are a lot of them that are, had some danger, hazardous limbs and what have you. And if you go back into the arborist report, let me just get you on the right page here. Hold on a second. Get myself on the right page. Probably put at the end. Yeah. So this would be, um, attachment D, page eleven of fifteen. Oh, no, those are all the, the, um, oaks, I'm sorry. Uh, but the trees that we're talking about there are eucalyptus and that that massing that you're talking about. Yeah. So basically the oaks, there are oaks growing along the trail, which we have identified as well, within the boundary or the parameter of the project. And if you take note and look at that, um, on that sheet, um, page eleven of fifteen, the trees are all numbered, um, the trees are located, these are the oaks. And then they describe, you know, of course, the height of spread, health, the structure, and then it'll say impacts. And the impacts mean anything that we're doing for during the project, whether it's, you know, demolition or construction, how could it may, you know, possibly affect one of those trees? And specifically on the trail itself, there are a lot of oak seedlings, saplings and larger, that are surrounded by invasive plant species. So that, if there are any impacts, it's because of the removal of those.
The idea is to kind of clear it up a little bit and let those, let those grow in.
Yeah, so it'd be clearing them out and then allowing them, uh, to fill in. So you could see under impacts, uh, what is it, like, three-ten, three-eleven, there's a handful of them there. It says invasive removal. So that would be like potentially the impact there. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, you did.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Very nice. Go ahead, Lucas.
So sorry, just, just to continue, I, there was also a lot of conversation and buzz around traffic and I know there was a traffic impact analysis that was done. I'd like to have Scott, I know he's online, I just wanted to check again real quickly here. If he could speak to some of that circulation movement, um, how he arrived at the conclusions that he arrived with.
Yeah.
And just kind of go from there. I know he's been listening in the whole night, so.
That'd be great. Scott, you're, you're online. Go ahead.
I'm, uh, live, awesome. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Scott Shell. I'm a principal with Associated Transportation Engineers.
We got the volume turned up. Yeah, Scott, if you can turn up your volume by chance, but we can't hear you very well.
Let me give that a whirl. Is that a little better?
Yeah, it sounds a little better. Yep.
Yeah, I don't have my IT guy here tonight. Again, I'm Scott Shell with Associated Transportation Engineers. I heard some questions about traffic. Uh, there was one question about, you know, LOS or level of service versus VMT, which is vehicle miles traveled.
Yeah.
Came up once or twice. Um, so our study looked at both of those. We looked at level of service, uh, for consistency analysis with your city policies as well as the policies in Ventura County's general plan. And we did include a VMT analysis, which was summarized in in both my study and the staff report. So that was one question I I wrote down. Uh, the other one was the internal capture. So how did we figure out how much traffic we'd expect coming over from the inn versus from the public? And, uh, we assumed a fifty percent capture. Fifty percent of our customers would come from the inn. And there was a question, how did we figure that out? Chris is here, so he can speak to that in more detail, but, uh, we got records from the existing hotels, restaurants that showed the internal capture that they get there now is seventy-seven percent. So we had them actually look at the records, how many people are coming in from the public versus how many people are coming from the inn. It was seventy-seven percent. We says, we'll be conservative and assume a fifty percent capture. There was another question about access left in and out. Uh, left in and out of both driveways is allowed now. The driveway design went through a process for the original Topa Winery approval. That included, um, consistency with the city's policies. Let me just look at the page. It's called the thoroughfare corridor overlay or the TCO. So there's actually quite a bit of work that went into the design of the two existing driveways about widths and locations to make sure that we were consistent with those TCO district requirements. I think the big thought there was is, you know, it's a Caltrans right of way. And so the idea was not to kind of touch those driveways, uh, for access, but they do allow lefts in and out. Uh, there is a center turn lane on the road, a left turn lane, a two-way left turn lane that allows for vehicles to store within the left turn lane to turn in and actually acceleration to get out. I'm looking at my notes here. I think that's about all I had. There were some, some questions about parking. You know, we did look at the code requirements and it meets the requirements. We also looked at what would happen in events. And again, if it's an event from the inn, we had, uh, parking was adequate. And if there was a point when the inn wanted to rent it out to a local event, we did stipulate in our study that there would have to be a parking management plan for that type of event, a local event. Um, I think we saw with Chris's presentation, the additional expansion of the, um, parking lots located on the inn site itself to make sure that those could be accommodated.
Okay. Uh, Scott, I apologize. I, I, I wanted to get a little bit of clarity on the fifty percent calculation. How you, how did you determine that again? You based it off of the current restaurants in the area?
It came from the restaurants that are actually located on the inn itself.
Okay. And, and do you, do you like survey the guests to find out where they live? Okay, yeah, that'd be, that'd be good.
There was a company called InfoGenesis. Tracked it down.
Yeah, just to, just to answer that, I actually have it right here. So what we did is we pulled the data out of our POS systems, point of sale system. It's called InfoGenesis, which is, it's just the software. Uh, so to give you, uh, kind of our statistics here, we use our three, you know, most visited restaurants, Jimmy's Pub, The Oak for lunch and dinner and Olivella. So out of a guest stay, ninety-two percent of guests that stay at Jimmy's Pub um, visit it one time or more. Eighty-eight percent go to The Oak for lunch or dinner one time or more. And fifty-one percent go to Olivella one time or more, and that averages seventy-seven percent of guests will visit one of these three. So we, we thought using fifty percent was a conservative value to say that, you know, a guest might visit the winery, fifty percent of our guests might go to the winery one time.
I got you. Okay, okay. That, that's, that's, that's a good rule of thumb.
Well, Chris is up. Let me just ask a question. You're, unfortunately, the labels we have here are not really precise. You're calling it the, the winery?
It seems a little basic, right?
But in fact, there's no wine that's made there.
There's no wine that's made.
You know, a vineyard, um, might be another name, but that's where you plant and grow grapes and, uh, tasting room might be another term because you're going to do some tasting. But the truth is that it's mostly a restaurant. And that's a change, and a change of use that's actually, in terms of the intensity of the use of the building, people come in, sit down for ninety minutes or two hours and, and, uh, as opposed to come in, stand at a bar, knock back things, buy, buy bottles of wine that they've just tasted. That the tasting room function is much more a retail, short-term experience as opposed to a restaurant. But now, you, that tasting, where people come in to taste the product of the, of the winery or the vineyard, they'll be coming in to taste wines that they might buy and take away, or they might buy and sample, or it's a different dynamic. You're not, you're not going to sort of learn about, you know, oh, this is, this is Topa Mountain Winery as opposed to the Ojai, um, vineyards or whatever, the.
Right, right.
I just think, you, it's, as I looked at, looked at this, I kept thinking, this is a really profound change in use from the what Larry did, which was, and as Larry left town, he said, I thought I was going into the wine business and I discovered I was going into the event business. And you're dialing the event thing way back from what it was, um, to corporate events as opposed to, um, parties, um, at least from what you said before.
Right.
So I just think we have to, have to look at it with a different, you know, it's not going to be the same business. On the one hand, it's going to be the same business. On the other hand, it's not going to be the same.
Exactly. It'll be a very different business. We're not making the wine there. We're not having our own wines that are, it's just going to be more of a tasting room for all sorts of wines. You're absolutely right. And there's the retail component. There's the ability to actually have a tasting menu or be served at a table. Um, and there's also a wine cellar that is going to be, it's in the plan that has a little bit more of the higher end wines that you also could select from.
Yeah, it's just, it just strikes me that this thing is going to be a very different animal than the one that we've seen. And I know that this board has previously had to deal with people, proprietors of, um, spaces which were, who, which were in the event business, as Larry was. And, uh, and our biggest issues were noise and traffic. Those are the, and it seems to me you're solving a lot of the traffic problems of the inn. And that the kind of noise that you'll be generating is going to be quite different. Not only will the volume be lower, but the, the nature of it will be, will be different.
And we'll be able to manage ourself, you know, and, and trust me, we're, I'm very sympathetic to the couple of neighbors that were here. I met with, you know, one of them individually and, you know, I, I understand where their homes are compared to this site. I understand that they understand living on a resort property. There is, they have to accept that some of these things exist. But that's no excuse for our lack of sensitivity and wanting to actually work with them to make sure that they're not going to have noise problems. The neighbor shared with me some videos that were taken inside of her house where she could hear a very, very, very loud event. Um, and that was way over the loud decibel level, you know, and so we will make sure to manage all of that because again, we're, we're, we have a relationship with these neighbors and our guests, and we've got to make sure everybody's happy. It's got to all coexist together, and I'm confident we can do that.
Jamie, are you asking a question though about this idea of like amendment or something versus like?
No, I was just, I was frustrated because as, as we were talking about this, we were talking about it as a tasting room of a winery, which is you go in and they, they pour the wines that they're selling at that point in time, and you're trying them out and they're, and they're essentially selling the wine of the winery that's being made at the winery. Um, this is a very different process where you're going in, you're tasting a variety of wines, maybe to find one you're going to have with your meal right then and there at the, at the winery. Or at the tasting room.
It does bring up, does bring up a good question for staff, though. Does the current use, um, allow for a restaurant?
Yeah, it, it did. It was, you know, Larry had hoped to have.
Yes.
But, uh, did, you know, Larry's my next door neighbor. I've known, known him when he was building this thing and was frustrated by the, by the city and the county and now I are one. But, but I, I, I know that he just, he actually, his feeling was he gave up on the restaurant just because it was going to be too complicated to.
I think that, that what we're comparing here is the restaurant business versus the event business.
Yes.
And in terms of the traffic flow and the noise level, the dining experience is going to be better for the neighborhood than the event business. But you got to control that event business.
Yeah, it, it's, um, you know, the, the event, definitely, I'm surprised that the, the idea of the event site has gotten as much attention as has, because, you know, the, the intent of buying the winery was not to, uh, it was just solely based on events by any means. Um, and if I could just, just say a couple of quick things, the, the existing winery is twenty-seven hundred square feet. We're proposing just under seventy-eight hundred square feet. Four thousand of that is the kitchen and bathrooms. And, and this, this, whoever is going to operate this winery, if it wasn't us, it's never going to make its full potential without a kitchen, without some sort of food service. And with the minimums that you have to, to build, this is not an overbuilt kitchen and the bathrooms are commensurate to this total square feet. So when you think about just the. So when you think about just the interior footprint of dining for the winery itself, it's increasing by 1,100 square feet. I would be willing to bet that this is 1,000 square feet right here, if we measured it. Only because I've been in this business too long, I understand square footage. I bet you this is 1,000 square feet. That's how much more space would be for patrons. The rest is going to be in the bathrooms and in the kitchen. A couple of other things, I just wanted, I appreciated a lot of the comments that were made from Larry's perspective. We are proposing to put in a sidewalk all the way down, which isn't required of us. So we are choosing to do, and that will be out of DG. I know there's some public works requirements. Also do curb all the way down the street as well, which are, you know, we're going to be required to take care of. There's another comment, the farmhouse style was only approved because of its location. I was here for that. So was Sylvia and Kathy. That certainly was not the case. It was more about what the farmhouse was, not where the location was. And that's not why the style of it was approved. I want to also address just set up and tear down with noise. There is ample storage at the actual winery for tables and for banquet chairs. And if there is set up and tear down, in most cases, it would be coming from the main road and not be, you know, intruding on the two neighbors, you know, the houses that are nearby. I promise we won't be doing DoorDash. You can write that in. And since we've taken over the winery, we have had many events at the winery since in the last two years. We've had, I don't know the exact number, but we've had a large number. We've had no noise complaints at all. As a matter of fact, one of the neighbors that I met with was surprised. They didn't even know we had done events. Not saying that all of our events are silent, you know, but we will be responsible and respectful for that because again, we don't want to, you know, the left hand to hurt the right hand because we've got our own guests on property to take care of. And I think just the last thing I was going to say is that I really, really do respect the comments that have been made tonight by a lot of the people concerned about the rush of this, that it feels rushed. I'm not sure what the whole December thing is because we just happened to be on, you know, in December. We were actually hoping to be presenting to you earlier this year. It just didn't work out. I, you know, from my perspective, I know I'm very enrooted into this community. I think the vast majority, I'm confident of this community is very excited for this winery to A reopen and B a better version of itself. So I know there hasn't been a whole lot of ability for folks to come out here to talk about how excited they are for this actual project to take place. But I can assure you, there's many, many people out there that are. At least I get asked everywhere I go, when's the winery going to be opening? It's a ways out yet, but I just would ask for your trust that, you know, we are going to take care of the noise as we, as needed. The quality orientation of this project is going to be very high. I know I shared with some of you the interiors. It will be something that is, I think, all the Ohio community will be very proud of because it's going to be one of the nicest restaurants, facilities in the town. And we can continue this conversation. We'll work with our neighbors and all of you. And we just, you know, we're hoping to, you know, move the process forward so we could potentially begin construction at the end of next summer. And that'd be the earliest that we'd be even able to do, to mobilize.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's great. I saw, Scott, you had your hand raised. I did have a quick question for you before you drop off.
I'm here.
Are you still online? Okay. I wanted to go back to your, your analysis. We have it on attachment C, page seven of 26. You outlined the LOS and the projected additional ADT, I guess that is, or LOS. And it's miniscule. So you're basically saying that there's really no, no impact at all on Highway 33 or Highway 150 based on this, based on LOS. And then on, with the MV, with the VMT analysis that you did, you mentioned that it's actually going to be a reduction in VMT because the, this location or this site, this project will be adding retail opportunities into the urban fabric and improving the overall retail destination proximity. So folks won't have to travel into downtown, serving the local area and shorten trips. Is that, so you're saying that there's no change to LOS, but there's actually going to be a lower amount with VMT?
Yeah, our analysis followed the state guidelines for retail establishments that are less than 50,000 square feet. So that's the state thresholds.
Okay.
They determined that retail developments for less than 50,000 square feet could be screened out from having to do a VMT analysis.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
So that was the first test.
Got it. So you didn't necessarily do the VMT analysis. It's more of a ballpark figure. Is that kind of fair?
It's actually going through the screening process from OPR, which is the Office of Research and Planning, Planning and Research, excuse me. So there's two thresholds. There's the retail threshold for VMT, which is a retail development that's less than 50,000 square feet. And there's a second screening threshold, which is a project that generates less than 110 ADT. So we looked at both of those in our study. So we said it meets the retail screening criteria and it also meets the small project or the 110 ADT screening criteria.
Okay, okay. I got it. Okay, so based on the retail analysis, you didn't have to necessarily do the VMT, but you did base it on the overall ADT, which is leveraged with the LOS projections as well, correct?
Wow, you're a scientist.
I don't know about that.
We did it, we did do it both ways, belt suspenders. Just say, you meet the retail and gave you the rationale that OPR talks about for retail. Basically used their language to say if you put local serving retail in locations, it should benefit VMT.
Yep.
We also looked at the change in traffic of ADT, average daily trips.
Yep.
For the, for the other screening criteria. And it was screened out under both of those, those screening criteria thresholds.
Okay, all right. And it looks like you also did an analysis at the intersection of Ohio Avenue and Maricopa Highway?
That's correct. We collected new traffic counts and went through the level of service analysis based on your city's
Yep.
policy thresholds, look at the existing level of service and how that might change with the change in traffic at the site.
And then those were, it looks like 0.48 potentially, so half a car increase? Is that right?
The level of service presentations are actually based on a volume to capacity ratio.
Okay.
So it says if, you know, how much of the capacity of the intersection is being used.
Yep.
And your policy thresholds say, if you get to a certain level that's not good, you could only use a little bit of that capacity.
Right.
That was, what that was trying to represent, but you're right. It's, it's a very small amount of a change in that volume to capacity ratio.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like half a car. All right. Okay, that's good. Appreciate it. Anybody else have questions for Scott? No? Good. Okay. I think we're good, Scott. Thank you. Okay, cool. Anyone else? Questions for staff?
I had a question about something that was a community member raised and in my short tenure, I don't have an answer for it. So they mentioned something about the, about thinking this should be a concept review instead of, I mean, has there been another review of this design?
There hasn't been a review in front of the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay, so just to roll that out a little bit more.
I just answered it.
I know you did. For the benefit of the two new commissioners, I think it's important that you understand the difference between a concept review and its purpose versus what we're seeing tonight. So with a concept review, really it's, it's vetting it for the, for the commission to provide comments, not a decision. Comments ask lots of questions in regards to the concept. Typically, there's not the level of detail that you're seeing here tonight. And it also provides an opportunity for the community to speak. While it's not required through the concept review for us to notify those, those neighbors or even to publish it within the Ohio Valley News or a local circulation paper, a local circulation, we do anyway because we want that feedback with these concept reviews, recognizing that there is no decision being made, but want to get those, that feedback. And lots of, lots of projects in the five years that I've been here, as long as, along with Mara, have, have had projects come forward as a concept review. And then some of those never go any further, right? This one could have gone through with a concept review, could have, but chose instead to bring forward a full project vetted. This isn't a ground-up construction. Typically, when we see, when we see concept reviews, it tends to be new, like new construction or a substantial change to, to the project itself. Other projects have had several concept reviews before being vetted and considered before this body. So it's just the, just want to, obviously this is for all five of you, but certainly for the two that are new and are hearing terms and phrases for the first time. M. Wheelow, I just want to just reference the sheet. Kathy used M. Wheelow as if it's interchangeable. That's something that's already within our code from a landscaping ordinance standpoint. I think it stands for maximum water efficiency, something along those lines.
Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance.
Thank you. That's, that is the terminology that's used and it's a practice. And it requires a design professional such as Kathy to do those, one of those calculations to ensure that there is a minimum amount of water that's being used for a specific site. So those, those are some of the, anytime that, that there is a phrase or something that's being used, please do not hesitate to ask either staff or the person that's making that, that statement. Don't just assume that everybody's going to know what those terms and phrases mean. I want to make sure we're on the same page.
Appreciate you, Lucas.
Just following up on it.
One other point if I could jump in there.
Yeah.
We, not often, but not always, have concept reviews for projects that are legislative, which means the applicant is asking to change the zoning or change the general plan or change the law.
Sure.
It's less common to have concept reviews for projects as here where the request is for a project within the existing law. Not that we've never done it, but it's just an often distinction.
Right. So I guess I'm wondering what the threshold kind of is to call something a, a large change or a small change?
Yeah, there's no hard line in our code for that. It's often,
Okay.
Certainly it's common for legislative projects or when an applicant or staff frankly have said to an applicant sometimes, hey, this, this has got to have a concept review. In this case, as noted, because it's a modification of existing site, staff brought it forward, put the applicants, worked on project. Of course, the commission can make a choice as it may.
I'd just like to add that not only is it an addition to an existing site, but to an existing use. It's, it's still a winery, although they're adding a larger kitchen to have more food. And they're, they want to include it along with the, with that bike, with, sorry, the path crossing to bring it in with the, with OBIS. But there's already outdoor seating, indoor seating. It's a, it's a winery. So and it's an expansion of an existing site and use.
I'm with you in the idea of like, you know, when should we be getting, you know, these projects for our review? And when should we be, you know, asked to make a decision? I'm of the opinion, we should get more analysis like this, right? This is very detailed. It's very well done. But I'm also the opinion that maybe we don't have to make a decision the same week that it's brought up. And so even though there wasn't a concept review here, we shouldn't be rushed as a commission to make a decision just because we were given the.
Totally.
Yeah, no, I was also curious because I've dealt with, you know, codes where it's, it's a number of things that could trigger what a new thing is considered, you know. For sure, in a lot of ways, this design feels very new. I think we can all probably agree on that, like, which is fine, which is, you know, part of it. So I was just trying to understand the threshold there because it could be square footage. It could be just expansion of use, you know. There are definitely walls remaining. So I see that for sure. But other than that, it's a pretty new project.
It's a big project.
It's a big project, yeah.
I have a few questions if anyone, you have.
Yeah, I do have, but go ahead.
Oh, you go first. You go first. You go ahead.
Well, no, I'm kind of thinking.
We'll just piggyback. All right.
And it's a permanent project, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, it won't go away.
Well, but you know, it's interesting, this whole question about do we do a concept review or do, and the person raising a, why don't you show us all your cards and tell us all of your master planning for all of these lots? Well, you know, I've been told by executives at the inn that that, that the, when they, after they bought the, the property, that one said it was going to be the spa. And they were going to move the spa out from in the, in the property, in the center, out there so that the community could use the spa more easily and they could get utilization of that, of that facility. And, you know, sometimes you don't know.
Yeah.
And you've got, you have a family making the decisions here. So they can change their mind.
They're not a city. They're not required to.
So it's, yeah. I, yeah. Also, I don't know any institution as big as, as that or as important as that that doesn't buy up its neighbors when they become available. Because you're always trying to think about what are we going to need next? I was surprised when the inn sold the property to Larry to build the winery to begin with, considering how close it was to their other property.
In regard to what Robert said a few minutes ago about not wanting to feel like a project of this size and complexity is rushed, I am also thinking in terms of the community. This really came, I think, as a surprise to the community. And being that it's the holidays, I would venture a guess that most of the community doesn't have any idea that this is coming our way.
I want to be careful. Are we getting into discussion right now? Do we have any more questions for staff? I just want to make sure we had any more questions for staff.
Do you have any to ask?
I have a couple, but I wanted to go, you can.
My last question, Steph. We're not allowed to favor locals over, you know, guests, right? We've just had this conversation.
Right. So, yeah, let me unpack that a bit. We can't force the inn to give the locals a discount because that, a discount on their services has nothing to do with our land use findings. The inn is not foolish. They can understand community support is necessary for their businesses to succeed. So they have extended out of their own volition a discount to locals, but we can't force them to impose that.
I am concerned that this facility may not actually be open to the community as much as maybe we all would like it to be, given private events that are going to happen and the biggest companies in the world rent out the inn and they have multiple events, you know. As Chris said, they've had, you know, you said 200 events over the last two years? How many events?
Same number.
Apologies, apologies, my bad. But a number of events over the last two years. And just making, is there, are we able as a planning commission to condition community access the same way that like the El Roblar is going to have to be open to the community, that restaurant space that's there? And the wellness spa?
Yeah, well, as I recall, the El Roblar conditions didn't prevent events, but they didn't prevent buyouts.
Let's not miss, I just want to make sure that we're not. I'm not talking about events. I'm talking about access to the public.
They're past any set limitations anyway on their permits.
Yeah.
But we haven't conditioned, we haven't prohibited buyouts in the past. So the, what you're talking about would be appropriation on buyouts.
So what we've talked about is other properties, names not to be named, have, you know, a limitation on number of events. The reality of that is that makes it more accessible to maybe the public because like that facility is open. Same with El Roblar's like spa, it's going to be open to the public, certain amount of days. It's going to be publicly accessible. I'm not getting to events or anything else. This is about the facility being publicly accessible. Are there conditions that we can put on spaces like this to ensure that the community has access to the facility?
I see where you're going.
If we can tie it to the findings, we would have to analyze that further to see if we can tie it back to the findings to how requiring a certain amount of accessibility is consistent with the CUP findings. Perhaps CUP finding number two that speaks to finding that the project would not create situations that are adverse to the public, the public interest and public welfare, arguing that continued access consistent on that general plan requirements for visitor-serving facilities is necessary to be maintained. We'd have, I'd want to think through that further against defensibility.
I'm not trying to take some little piece and turn it into a bigger thing with the findings that are in the original CUP. I'm also not trying to put words into like the Ohio Valley and spas mouths about what they're trying to. about what they're trying to do here. The consideration is, uh, how can we ensure that the facility will remain open to the public, knowing that buyouts and events, private events are a big opportunity to, to use this space? Thank you.
Cool. So a couple of questions. Well, I just have a couple more and then we'll go to discussion, that's okay. Alright, sorry. So page eight of 11 on the staff report outlines the design standards that are embedded in our code, section 10.2-2004 standards. Context, continuity, scale, architecture. Under context, we have new structures should employ materials, colors, textures, styles, building mass and scale that are compatible with architectural character and forms of surrounding buildings. And then architecture that picks interests and as opposed to monotonous forms or elevations. And then the rationale that we use to defend these statements to say that this does comply with our design standards is that the proposed farmhouse architectural style is appropriate and is not only is a surrounding architectural electric, but a farmhouse style included in the Ojai Valley and main campus, which is not visible to the public. So I guess my question is, do we have any other commercial farmhouses that are visible to the public in Ojai?
The way I wanna respond to that is that, especially in that section of Ojai Avenue, West Ojai Avenue, that the architecture is completely eclectic.
I agree, 100%.
So, but I guess that, that's not answering your question. I cannot think of a farmhouse, uh, style, um, architecture. I can think of many different types of architectural styles, though.
Okay.
Uh, Walkers.
Uh, Walkers.
Walkers is farmhouse style.
Oh, yeah, it is kinda farmhouse style, isn't it?
It is, it is, it's an ag building, it's an old.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. Okay, alright, that's fair. Alright. Let's see, so conditional use permit, what we're outlining, we're saying that the special event hours have been approved from Sunday through Saturday from noon to 11:00 PM. Special events are approved for specifically excluding arrivals to purchase or impink containers. No special events on weekdays were to begin or end during the time period from 6:30 AM to 9:00, et cetera, et cetera. This is what's in the current permit, current, current use permit, right? The CUP?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and they're not changing that? They wanna leave that the same?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. However, the number and the type of outdoor experiences have increased and therefore requires planning commission review and consideration. So what we're considering for the CUP is this expanded outdoor experience and, you know, how do we, how do we address that in the CUP? Is that?
So it's the, it's the increase in the outdoor seating. There are more seats outside than there were previously and so that's, that's the expansion. It's not an event, it's a location to sit.
Okay.
And outdoor seating is, requires a CUP.
Okay, okay, got it. So that, that's really all we're being asked for in the CUP?
Well, that and also chain link fences require conditional use permits and there's a section to tie into an existing fence on the west property line, toward, uh, the northwest property line.
Okay, got it, got it.
Uh, four feet in height.
Okay, cool. Alright, and then the second, and another question, noise on page 10, 11. It does outline the, the code standards of 65 decibels and, and then the, is it the applicant that is requesting the 55 decibels? There, because that has been brought up a couple of times. But my question is, is if this is not in the code of 55 decibels, how will this be enforced and who will be responsible party to addressing the 55 decibels? Or is it just a, some, just a nice to have?
If it's part of the project description, then it will, we will include that in the resolution. I would like to have the applicant, if, if you'd like to talk further about that 55, I'd like to address the applicant.
Well, I guess my question is, how do we enforce the 55?
If it's part of the project description, we can enforce it as part of the conditions. I'm looking, trying to find the condition number that matches that one. But yeah, we can, we can require them to do their project as they proposed. So we can enforce, we have decimal meters which we've used. Not every event, obviously, but upon complaints, we'll go out and we'll assess either code enforcement staff or the sheriffs.
Yeah, I, I wanna take just a, a step further with not driven through complaint, but driven through compliance.
Right.
So what that means is that for the first event that, that takes place, we would have co-compliance or staff out there evaluating to ensure that they are meeting those. We have a decimal reader that we can go out and, and assure that the, the standard is being met.
Now, considering, are there, are we monitoring how many events they're having? Are they letting us know so we know when to send out these folks?
There's no condition of approval that requires that at this point.
So how do we know when they're having events? Is that for the applicant?
Yeah, so it would be, it would be a question for the applicant, but the assumption is they would be making us aware of that first event.
Okay, alright. I guess, Chris, I don't know if you have, want to address that? You don't have to, but if you want to, you can.
Well, trying to think. Out of the thousands of room nights that we do a year, we do about 35, 30,000 group rooms a year. So I don't know exactly how many of individual events that, you know, distills down to, but it's quite a few. How many would be actually at the winery is hard, is hard to say. It's not for everyone. It's, you know, some people might not choose to do it for a variety of reasons, because they don't wanna add decor or whatever. I mean, it's really hard for me to say.
But I guess my question is, regardless of the number of events, is there a, a process to let the city know that you're having an event? Or is there a thought around that?
Well, just because it's new to me, because we do events every day. I mean, at the specific location, I mean, I could, we could work with the city if that's something that you're, you're interested.
To figure out what qualifies for an event.
Right.
Because you mentioned, yeah, you, you have a wide range of different events and different types and really you gotta figure out what does constitute for an event.
Well, true, it could be 12 people in that private dining room. Is that an event? Or is it, is it 30 people, is it 50 people? Or is it, you know, the film festival doing a screening? That's definitely an event, right?
Yeah.
So.
Or a, or a corporate event.
Or a corporate event, which, you know, yeah. So that, you know, we could certainly work with the city staff on that.
Okay, thank you.
Where in the resolution, does it talk about the 55 decibel?
So the resolution, the resolution does not include the 55 decibel. The resolution in condition number one states that the project will be as proposed in the, in the approved plans. And so it's the, the plans that are defining the 55 decibel? Where, where is that?
And I'll, I'll add while Ms. McAluso is looking up the site and the reference in the plans, commission can certainly add a line to condition number 10, which the special event hours condition to expressly state, noise from special events shall not exceed 55 decibels.
Well, it.
If the commission were to.
It's, it's in here in that it is, it's 65 decibels up to 10 o'clock at night. But they also have the right to do special events that go to 11 o'clock at night and it's the cap that, that goes from 10 to 11 where it's gotta be dialed back to 55. But it doesn't, you can't find it written that way, but that's, but that's what.
The net effect, yeah.
What's in that effect of it is, yeah.
We can add it.
Cool. Awesome. Any other questions for staff?
Well, yeah, okay, so what do we do?
Well, we have a discussion. Not done yet.
Commission has options.
Yes, we have options.
In case you hadn't noticed, we haven't discussed yet.
We haven't discussed as a group what we would like to do. So that's kinda. So we're at that middle part of the meeting where we discuss our options and our feelings and where we would like to see this thing go. So that's where we're at. So if you have, if you'd like to comment or make a motion or discuss item, well, we don't have to make motions yet, we can do that later. But if you have some items you'd like to share? Nothing? Okay. Robert?
I definitely would like to better understand what type of conditions we've put on other, you know, properties that are in the same neighborhood relating to events, decibel levels, capacity, you know, parking, just so that we can, we can be, we can compare against, but also be fundamentally fair for all of our, our residents and businesses that come before this commission. What I'm seeing is that we have a history of subjectively applying different standards to different, you know, applicants, businesses, property owners, based on how they interact with the city. And while I agree bad people shouldn't be reported, rewarded with good things, I also believe that a part of the city's process should be fundamental fairness that applies an objective standard across all applicants. And so I would like, before we vote on this, to have a better understanding of what we've been doing in the past.
Yeah, so just to make sure, and I'm trying, I'm restating what you're saying just to make sure I understand.
Sure.
So have staff go back, research potential, potential conditions of events. I think the inn is, app has, has offered to kinda help the city with that analysis to figure out how many, what qualifies and constitutes an event. Because to, to the inn's point, they have a lot of events and, you know, grouping those into what categorizes as a, what qualifies for an event for the city is different than what qualifies for an event for the inn. So we just need to, probably like you mentioned, we need to, we need to research that, maybe come up with some parameters so we have some, some ideas on what kinda conditions we can apply for events.
That's fair.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, like that. Cool, anybody else? Or I'm sorry?
I actually.
Some more? If you have more, feel free. Okay, we'll come back.
I, I have a comment on that and that is that what we've seen mostly, and counsel will probably jump on this, is not scofflaws, but we've had, we've had people who have had real problems of having, uh, uh, events which stretch definitions in terms of, you know, they, they're, they're too noisy, there, there are too many people parked by the side of the road, there are too many. The inn here and their architects have, and their consultants have anticipated all of those things. They're providing more parking than would necessarily be required. And we, you know, there's another place where the, you know, where we've had to figure out all, where all the extra cars were gonna go before we'd approve something here. They've figured out where all the cars are gonna go.
Sure, for the, the record, my feelings, right? We talked about our feelings. I love this, this is gonna be so fun. I love going to the inn. It's been a, a great, like, thing for my family and friends that visit. I love wine, I think it's gonna be an awesome, awesome venue. I think what we're talking about now is like, what are the conditions on it? To make sure that it's accessible to the public, we're not like disrupting the neighborhood. We're also treating all applicants from a standard, an objective standard, fundamental fairness. But also this is gonna be precedent setting that whatever we decide here should also be applied to the next applicant. So not just taking what we previously did and applying it to the inn on this decision, but also taking what we previously done, have done, what we're gonna do here with this proposal and applying it to the next applicant.
I like that.
But the applicants where we have put significant conditions and restrictions on them have had serious problems with their neighbors and with the city. And so some of that is in reaction to, in hopes to mitigate, to be helpful to the property owner who has, wants to do something. But we put conditions on and mitigations into our approval because it, we start from there. Oh, you want to, you want to extend and do this? Well, we're gonna, because you have such a terrible record on this, we're going to require you to do this. But the question is, do we need to be coming up with new generalized rules and regulations that become one more thing which gives the city a reputation of being a very tough place to do business with? Because it's got all these rules and regulations and you gotta jump through so many hoops and, you know, even if you're doing a good job, so.
I think you're, I think you're right, it's a balancing act.
Yeah, it's a balancing act, it's a balancing.
And at Robert's point, I think we need to do, you know, having, having a good thorough amount of research to, to help create a, kind of a fair, you know, body of work to avoid Matt's input so we don't have to have lawyers in here. I mean, obviously, we love him here, but it would just, you know, if everybody understands that it's the same sort of practices among, you don't have to have so many disagreements. So I agree with Robert's idea on that. And then, sorry, Jonathan, you had.
Well, I just wanted to, I mean, I think Robert said something to me that's really important about this project. I think it's about the sort of, it's a big project. It's at a very obviously important moment as you enter Ojai. So I think precedence, I think it's, it's, it's gonna be precedent setting on a number of scales. And I think that's something that is, you know, I think you guys sort of know that because you've provided the level of, you know, work and consideration and design that's gone into this already. What we've also received, you know, from the community and maybe not everything, maybe not enough of the positive from the community is a reaction to the knowledge that this is a precedent setting project. You know, I think throughout those things, you know, for sure, things about, that I think I heard that I did have questions about myself regarding the bike path, regarding the, the location of the parking, regarding the aesthetic. I mean, those are kind of precedence questions. It's like not really, I don't, as someone who's been on the other side, I'm not trying to like design this for them, you know? But I do feel that, what does it mean when you start saying, okay, yeah, we can have a break in the bike path? You know, like what does that set up for other, you know, future projects? It might be fine, what, but how do we sort of set it up in the right way? You know, the parking, I think someone sort of said it, but I mean, it's all, it's obvious. It's like, we already have this kind of, I would maybe argue an unfortunate string of parking along the entrance to Ojai. We are adding more there. Yes, screening it, that's a thing, that might be the answer. But once again, it's kind of, once again, like kind of adding to, to that, that question of what's the precedence of this new development or expanded development within this area? And then the aesthetic, I mean, I think it sounds like the community have a lot of questions about it. I mean, I'm, you know, I think there's quite, you know, it's, once again, it's not like a community design project, but, you know, how, if this is the first time they're seeing it, is there a way for those to be heard and at least, you know, responded to in some way? Maybe backed up, you know? Well, this is, we've been given some good reasons, but maybe we need a little more information on it.
Just to that last point, I, whether it's a concept review or just like multiple meetings, I think the public would appreciate all the knowledge that's here in these like really well-written reports. And I, I agree, I think the public is, is actually asking on multiple things that have come before this commission for more civic engagement, more opportunity to be a part of the process.
I agree with that. A lot of the concerns that were expressed by the community that we did hear from, I think were alleviated tonight to a large degree with, with the information that we got. For example, the noise levels, I really do believe that that's going to be, that that's not going to be a problem. The number of parking places is, I think, ample. I would hope that Chris will take a look at and at least consider whether moving the parking from the northern edge of the lot. from the northern edge of the lot, the new parking from the northern edge to the southern edge of that property, which, which also saves street front property for future uses. It might be a, a good thing to, to have in your pocket. The style of the building is, I'm really torn about that. I like what's there, and clearly the comments from the community indicated that they also liked what's there. The barn is interesting, but it is hidden away on the, on the Ojai Inn property. The fact that the trees and the shrubbery will sort of soften, or not hide, but definitely soften the, the look of the barn, gives me comfort. Because I, I think that the barn without any trees or shrubbery around with it would be kind of in your face. But this, you know, will proba, it works for me, so. I do think that what we're all saying here tonight is that we would like a little more time to consider it, especially for the sake of the community, that they have not really felt like they've been able to assess what's happening. And this is a big, important project right at the entry of our community. So I would suggest that we continue this until January.
Okay. I have a couple.
Does that, take a second before we, is that a motion? Is that, does it take a second?
Well, you're, you're, yeah, you're proposing the formation of a motion.
Yes, I am, I didn't actually move it, did I?
You did not.
You're moving to a motion.
You're moving to a motion.
Moving toward one, yes.
But I did, I did want to add a couple of things before you moved to the motion. And then you can move to your motion. I did want to just articulate and highlight some of the comments that we got from the public, just to reiterate kind of the theme that we're hearing. And I think, I think Judy's right, I think a lot of these were addressed tonight, which is awesome. Now, I, I have, number one was noise, already complaints from the current, from the winery, I think that was addressed. Parking, I think that was addressed, it's what we heard from our community. We also heard traffic flow at the intersection, I think that was addressed. The public trail impacts, you know, what are the entrance to the trail going to be like? I think we heard about that. I think the thing that we still need to consider is, this is going to impact the entire city for decades. And that is, it is going to be a big change to our, our, our town, so it is something that we need to consider. It is going, it is the entrance to Ojai. We do have to look at the events. It is going to have, there is no sidewalk visit for, you know, for folks that are visually impaired. There could be issues going down the, the bike trail. So like looking at potential ADA, you know, requirements, things like that, or conditions around, you know, handicap access with relative bike trail, I think is something we need to look at. And then I think scale and mass of the, of the style of the architecture, I think is something that, I don't know if it's, if it's possible to look at, but it's something I think maybe we could consider. Maybe just changing some of the, the elements and the elevations of the form, so it's not just one giant box. Just different styles and architectural styles, like Jonathan, you probably know way more about that stuff than I do. But that, you know, is something that maybe consider, I don't know. And, and the reason I bring that up is, we had, I think, at least 11 people write in. And out of those 11, six said they want no farmhouse. Don't know why, but they just said they don't like it. Don't know why. Again, they don't feel that it blends in with the continuity and the, and the design of, of what Ojai is, which is that Mission Revival style. So it's just out of place, they feel, with the overall, you know, community.
Do we have a specific design that's required for the stretch of Ojai Ave?
Good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's not a design guideline that applies to this part of Ojai Avenue. There's some design guidelines that apply to other parts of Ojai Avenue, but not this far, not this far west. But it does have, you know, the community character concerns is noted, of course.
Yeah. So yeah, I just wanted to share some of those things. And again, I, I do appreciate, you know, the, the folks from the Inn and, you know, all of the, the level of work they've gone into. This is, it's, it's going to be amazing, and I'm super excited about it. I mean, I, I loved the winery when it was there, and, you know, having this new version of it, I think is going to be even better. So I, I, I do like that piece of it. But I'll leave it up to you to continue your motion.
Well, do we, like, how are they going to address that last question?
Which one is that?
About sort of this, I don't know, farmhouse, not farmhouse, something like, I mean, what are we kind of?
I don't know.
You know, offering as like a sort of things to, if we're pushing this along to think about more?
Well, I think.
Is there anything we can sort of?
Ask staff to research?
Yeah, or, or the applicant to think about.
I think we can ask the applicant to think about it, for sure. Do they have to do anything? No.
No, of course not. No, no, I mean, but, you know, I'm just thinking about, it's a, it, you know, I think it's, it's a tricky one. You know, because like you're saying, there's no design guideline about it.
Certainly ask the applicant to take the concerns raised by the commission and by the community into account, and consider the many architectural and site design and the other tools in the toolbox to address the concern and see what they come up with.
Yeah, okay.
I'm new. Do we submit the questions or requests that we have to the planning department? Are we able to discuss it with our other commissioners? Do we have to do that tonight at another meeting? What is the process for helping move this forward with?
Oh.
Potential changes, whether it's to a resolution or the plans?
That's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, but after tonight?
After tonight, you'll have two choices. Choice one is, any two commissioners can, can pair up on any given project, not more than two per project, to avoid Brownac problems. And second, any commissioner can communicate with myself or staff or any of the planners or Ms. Anderson, and that's fine, because we, we avoid Brownac violations by not communicating what one says to the other to the other. We avoid ever, never adding up to three. So if you've got ideas for the resolution or questions or concern, concerns or comments, or questions for more information you want to see when it comes back, Lucas is your person.
Great, because my point is, like, what I might ask for, the other four commissioners may not agree with. And even if I buddy up with one other person, the majority of the planning commission could still not agree with what I'm potentially asking for. And what I don't want to do is go back to the applicant and ask for all these things that the rest of the commission's like, why did you do that? We, we're not even going to approve that anyways.
Yeah, and in that regard, if it's something that's distinct from an information piece versus a project change, then it'd be, it'd have to be baked into motion at the meeting, in terms of, you know, I would ask, I won't put words in your mouth, but if you're, if it's a request for information, just bring it to staff, we'll, we'll get the information. If it's a request for, I think it should be this way, not that way, well, majority will control.
And, and we, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can ask staff to do additional research and come back with recommendations on conditions.
Absolutely, yeah, that's staff's job.
Yeah, and, and those recommendations for those conditions can be based on the conversations that we've been having tonight, which I hope you guys have been taking notes.
That we have, and yes.
Oh, you guys do, so you guys do a great job. But I have, I have my notes too, just in case, just in case you guys need it.
And is it possible, if we're going to push this out to January, is it? No, I'm not even going to ask that. We should all enjoy the holidays.
So let's, let's, let's do this. I think you started a motion, did you want to continue?
Ah, yes, I move that we continue this item to a date certain. And that date certain, I need to confer with Lucas to see what is imminent on the schedule. Does the second meeting in January work? Oh, wait a minute, the first meeting gets canceled.
The first meeting's January 1st, so.
Yeah.
I would say no to January 1st.
Are we limited?
Unless you want to make a lot of people upset.
Can we have another meeting? I mean, can we always just decide to have another meeting? Yeah, take up two meetings in January, just because January 1st happens to be a holiday doesn't really mean that we.
Well, I, I think Lucas, if I'm wrong, or correct me if I'm wrong, but we can have a special meeting for something if, if need be, correct?
We can. Yes.
That's possible.
Let me offer this.
Yes, help.
Second meeting is January 15th. From what we've heard tonight, I'm hearing really two major pieces. If I can help kind of guide some of this, it sounds like a continuation, date certain, right? One is design, from a community character standpoint, in terms of flushing out the, or flushing out the design that was, that's, that was presented tonight. Understanding kind of the roles and responsibilities of how that interacts with probably Ojai Avenue to a certain degree. The second piece is the event and the events that are looking to be taking place here. And more importantly, conditions that have been imposed upon previous applicants and previous projects, and kind of flushing that out. Recognizing that there are two, but still the full body, understanding kind of the history of how that's evolved
Yep.
over the last four years, I would say.
And I know those were very site-specific and, but there probably are aspects of it that can be leveraged on a broad.
Yeah, I mean, to, to Commissioner Bennett's point, right. Bad actors, and then it was the result of the conditions to ensure compliance.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
Which is not the case here, but an even keel across the board, a fair treatment, is reasonable in terms of looking at that and understanding and kind of making sure that the Inn's on board with some of these potential limitations.
Yeah.
Right? So I think those things need to be flushed out kind of with the applicant and working through some of that as well. The noise piece?
Yes.
I think the noise piece can, can be baked into the conditions themselves, but I also need to, to have the conversation with the applicant
Monitor.
offline, just to understand how that will end up functioning, and then potentially writing in some of that into the, to the conditions as well. So everybody's on the same page and there's some transparency there as well.
I think the process around them informing you when they're having an event, so you can then.
Yeah, I mean, previous applicants have, have had that baked into the code, or not into the code, into the conditions
Okay.
to ensure compliance, because if, if they're not meeting that, then it becomes a strike against them
Right.
regarding the, the project itself. So just recognizing that upfront and kind of explaining it to the applicant moving forward. I think those are the three major things that I'm seeing. The traffic stuff, I, I truly do believe in, in the conversations that I've been having and hearing from ATE and, you know, the consultant on this, that feels like that's been put to bed for the most part. Same thing with the, with the parking as well, it seems like that's been put to bed.
I do have a question on the parking though. Heightened screening from the street, and I think that Chris mentioned it, that having the bush size increase is a potential.
Well, just, I mean, we can condition it to have a height limitation or a height.
I don't know if it's a condition.
There's, there's nothing in the code that actually has a height, that, like, the limitation on, on a, a bush or vegetation having a height restriction.
I guess, I guess what I'm.
We do have it on walls.
We do have it on walls.
We have it on walls, but I know this is not a wall. I guess what it would be is more, seeing if the applicant could look at that and make it a part of their considerations. Not necessarily making it a condition, but just something for the applicant to consider.
A design feature.
A design feature of consideration.
And this is just a, it's a question more than anything else. I believe that, that on the site, running parallel to Ojai Avenue, there is currently parking on their exit, which goes up to the east, running parallel on Ojai Avenue. You come in to where the parking lot is, but you can also peel off and go up and, and to the east. And along that road, I believe, which is interior, and I was trying to find it in the demolition, demolition plans, and I don't see it there. But I believe he, there, parallel parking, parallel to the curb parking, is already there and allowed. So the idea of, well, we don't want to see cars when we're driving into town, I believe that there's a strip of parking in the, at the winery that runs parallel.
Oh, you might, yeah, you might be right.
What?
I think you're right.
Yeah, and, and so, it's like, okay, so we're going to go from, we're going to move it in a little bit, and we're going to go and, and have perpendicular parking rather than parallel parking, but you're still seeing cars now.
Right, you're talking about the visibility of.
Yeah, I, well, I mean, that, what's, why, what's the concern? And concern that I've heard expressed is, well, the first thing you see when you come into town is you see the parking lot there. And I'm trying to figure out what the parking lot is. Well, it's a row of cars that are parked perpendicular to Ojai Avenue that are on a, an interior road on the lot. Well, that interior road currently exists, there's a curb cut there, that's one of the two curb cuts, and it currently has parking on it, it's just, it's parallel as opposed to perpendicular.
Right, you are correct, that's correct.
That's all. So it's just, it's just to answer that issue for some people who say, well, I don't want to come into town and see cars parked. You know, and, well, it.
There's a site, two sites over that already has that. So the, the reality is, is that we can do kind of a, a deeper dive into some of that assessment pieces regarding the parking, but I think the parking is pretty well been put to, put, put to bed, probably putting a bow on it to a certain degree.
The parking, right.
But I do think the, the design, community character piece does need to be teased out a little bit more. And then the event conditions that we were, that we were kind of wrestling with.
Okay, part of that on the event side, we can put together a history that explains the recent sets of events, conditions that have been imposed, and what the facts were that led to the imposition of those.
Right.
That would document what you've noted, Commissioner Bennett, which is true. Many of those other sites had documented histories of sheriff's complaints and code enforcement complaints that led to the process, as distinct so far from this site, which does not have a recent documented complaint history. So we can put that information together as part of developing more information for the commission. We can also consider, in consultation with the applicant, additional event management conditions that would be, seek to achieve the goals as discussed.
Cool, I like that. All right, so I think we have a
We have a motion that's not quite finished. Yeah, we're looking to a date certain, and.
I think staff would suggest January 15th.
Correct.
And which creates enough time to do the analysis that we discussed. We could push it earlier, but staff will be engaged in items for the city council and in getting this information together, I, I feel like the 15th would be reasonable.
Okay.
To be reasonable, the holiday season does, does present some challenges. So, so having it any earlier than that is not reasonable.
Right.
Do we have any other?
But you do have a, a, an item already on January 15th, a guest house on Foothill.
It would just be a longer meeting.
Just add.
We regularly have two items on the agenda. Just want to clarify that. Or, or more, that is the, that's the floor.
All right. Okay, so do I hear the full motion? If, if Matt or Lucas, if you want to repeat it or if you know it or?
Yeah, so my suggestion is the motion is simply to continue the matter to a date certain of January 15th, 2025, or analysis of the issues as summarized by staff.
Okay, all right.
Who's having?
The second's a motion.
All right, we have a second?
Roll call.
All right, we'll have a roll call.
Trent?
Yes. It's Trent, it's okay, it's okay, it's okay. You can be a Trent too. Uh, yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Chesley?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, appreciate it, it was great.
We get a call to meeting, or we?
No, we still got some stuff to do. Not, not quite yet. Welcome to the planning commission.
We can discuss this stuff all night.
I know. Okay. Okay. All right, so let's, uh, let's wait till we clear out here. Thank you. Well, hang on.
But I'm going to have you vote collectively, because we also have January 1st.
Yeah.
If anybody would like to be here, please raise your hand.
No.
No, there will be no staff support, because it's a holiday for our employees.
I would be virtual, which is fine.
So let, let's make a motion to cancel December's 18th meeting and January 1st. Any seconds?
I so move.
You so move?
You, you don't--
I don't move. Oh, I don't get to do anything?
No.
Okay. I second. There we go. All right, can we get a roll call?
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Chesley?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
So, thank you. The 15th is definitely on.
Yes.
Already, so for instance, the, the CUP, DRP for a guest house, which is not the same as an ADU, is scheduled for the 15th, and we fully anticipate that being heard before this body. So before you ask a question, I just want to clarify, and Matt doesn't get mad at me, it's just, I can only really just give very basic information, answering any questions in regards to these items that have been tentatively placed on the agendas. We can't dive into any sort of detail. So I just want to make sure with the two new commissioners that we're not running into potential Brown Act violations.
Yeah, it'd be awesome to be able to understand what we've done for similar CUPs for guest houses.
Weird. I think it was from your mic. I don't know why it did that. I have no idea.
That was weird.
It was weird.
Okay, so ask your question again.
Yeah, yeah. For the discussion, it would be nice to understand what we've previously done for CUPs related to guest houses.
Absolutely. Like a little bit of a history and some context with it, because it is a little bit confusing how our code addresses guest house and why they're different than an ADU or other accessory units of that, of that scale.
Thank you.
So, yes, absolutely.
Cool. All right. Is that it on future agenda items?
The rest of the pendings that you're seeing there, there are other items. A few years ago, I talked about a log jam that this body helped unclog.
Yep.
We're flowing pretty smoothly right now. Any of these items that are coming forward, we'll try, try to put them in pairs or more.
Awesome.
So just expect something. 2025's going to be busy.
Yeah, it's all good. You guys do good work.
So can I just ask a question? Because it's not dri, this is not an, an item driven by an application, the Title 10 land use and zoning charts and outdoor dining and dining facilities. That's just, that's just the issue that floats out there, I assume.
So--
It's not--
Excellent--
--tied to a specific--
Excellent question. So that is an item that is residual from the Title 10 errata--
Right.
--and some of those minor revisions that were done. What was born from that and has been discussed before this body on a couple of different occasions was the land use chart and outdoor dining, and the confusions that exist within the, the realm of outdoor dining.
Lots of it.
With, with the new, with the new council, I think it's probably best that we hold off on moving forward with any of those until we hear from, from council in terms of what their kind of goals and objectives are into the future.
And I'll add to that, that the council is looking at a goals, a goal-setting discussion date very much to be determined, but probably early spring, February, March, somewhere in there, for the new coun, the current and new council to sit down and talk about their goals and objectives. And that, things like this would flow into that.
Those is, those issues still exist, though. That's, that's the interesting piece, is they're confusing, and when projects come before this body that have those, those pieces tied like we did tonight, while no one asked that question, the outdoor dining is confusing in terms of how it, how it's addressed on all different factions. So I can certainly talk--
We won't get into it now.
--offline about how frustrating that, that piece is at this point.
A lot of that stemmed from the, the COVID piece.
Lucas?
Yeah.
Um, I don't see the cabin village or the movement from the tent village to the cabin concept on here.
Uh, yeah, we should be adding that to this tentative, for sure. I will add that. But it is going to be at, it, it will be coming before this body for some consideration in 2025, early 2025.
Early.
Yep, absolutely.
All right.
Does the city council have to do something first, or no?
It's going to come back to the planning commission--
Mm-hmm.
--for the next open session discussion of it. It'll be back here at the planning commission, and then from there, it'll go back, whatever may happen, the planning commission likely go up to council from there.
Yeah, we'll make a, a vote, and then it will go to, and it'll go to city council.
Is there any way that the in decision winds up going to the council?
Oh, you're talking about the in that was discussed tonight?
Yes.
Only on appeal. Now, I will say this, the agreements with the access across the trail, that is for the, for the, for the council to make determination.
Ah, okay.
So that's why it's a condition. There's no details on that, because that's not for this body.
Right.
Okay.
I may, I may be wrong, but I think that we have, in the discuss, the discussion misinterpreted the area that was going to be crossed by, if you will, rumble strips.
So that's a point we should pick up in the next discussion of it, because the applicant's left the room.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know that. And all, all I'm saying is I think we want to get them to address that issue, because I think that someone picked it up and said, gee, I don't want to be on a bicycle and then be thrown by that. And I think that was wrong interpretation of what they were presenting. So you might have them--
More public education.
Right.
Okay. Clarification, clarification.
Sure. Clarification.
Okay. That's as far as we should go.
Yeah.
I don't want to--
We're going to talk about it anymore.
Walk around the tentative, we're moving off of it.
Any more future agenda items? We could?